To begin our council meeting with the First Peoples' Recognition Statement, that is also a gift from the Aboriginal community. Several members came together to craft the statement that will be read at the beginning of every council meeting starting tonight. Segol ani buju wache ya kwekwe. As the Mayor of the City of Kingston, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honour and celebrate these traditional lands as a gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors, who were entrusted to care for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer our gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share this space now and walk side by side into the future. We did discuss a number of meetings in Committee of the Whole closed session regarding a number of pending acquisitions or dispositions of land, so I will ask the Clerk for a motion to rise with reporting.
It is moved by Councillor Sandek, seconded by Councillor George, that council rise from Committee of the Whole closed meeting with the rules of file 2010-1 be waived in the Chair Report.
And that carries.
It's moved by Councillor George, seconded by Councillor Hutchinson, that council direct and instruct staff to negotiate terms and conditions for a lease amending agreement to Five Court Street that will grant the province a right of first offer and right of first refusal to lease One Court Street and 150 West Street with annual payments to the city in accordance with the directions and instructions provided to staff by council when it considered report number 15-292 and its closed session meeting of June 16, 2015. And the council authorise the Mayor and Clerk to execute the lease amending agreement and any other required documents in a form satisfactory to the Director of Legal Services.
And that carries. So next, we have the approval of the addits. Just to note that on the addits, there was one added item for the Committee of the Whole closed meeting. We have a couple of delegations, a petition, and a change in a report from the CAO. So with that, I'll ask for a mover and seconder for the addits, please. Moved by Councillor Neil, seconded by Councillor Turner. All those, so please vote now. And that carries. Are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interest? Councillor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I, Liz Shell, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Committee of the Whole closed meeting, item F, Ontario Municipal Board Appeals PRK Developments, as my son is part owner of a nearby business. Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you. Seeing no other disclosures of potential pecuniary interest, we have no presentations tonight, but we do have two delegations. So first, we will invite Pamela Cornell to appear before council to speak to new motion number two with respect to Canada Post's scheduled elimination of door-to-door postal delivery. Just to note to all our delegations is that you have five minutes. Please come forward. You can just come to the podium right here.
Here?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Pamela Cornell. I'm a letter carrier here in town, and I'm here this evening with Janseene Small, who lives on my letter carrier walk. She hasn't prepared a talk, but if any of you have any questions about the role letter carriers have played in her life here in Kingston, she'd be happy to answer them. I want to address three questions raised by the impending loss of door-to-door delivery. First, who suffers? Second, who benefits? And third, why is it happening? Who suffers? Well, obviously, the people who lose their jobs, jobs that provide healthy exercise along with decent wages and benefits. Here in Kingston, 32 letter carriers are slated to be cut. Of course, eliminating door-to-door delivery will make the lives of disabled people even more challenging. And then there are the elderly, a growing segment of the population. They will be put at greater risk of falls around icy community mailboxes, otherwise known as CMBs. A senior in Hamilton suffered a broken leg in February while trying to access his CMB, and an 81-year-old in Windsor slipped on the ice in front of his CMB, hitting his head and requiring eight stitches above his left eye. Theft is a big concern with CMBs. We know that criminals bent on identity theft break into them, but there's another kind of theft going on here, and Canada Post is the culprit. By forcing you to go out and get your mail instead of having it delivered to your door, they're stealing your time. It's akin to those recorded messages that say, "All our agents are currently busy with other people. Your call is important to us, but your time isn't. Please stay on the line for up to 30 minutes, and your call will be answered in sequence." To date, 574 municipalities have passed resolutions opposing the elimination of door-to-door mail delivery. Why? Because they haven't been consulted, even though they will be incurring costs for access ramps, signposts, additional streetlights, enhanced security, and snow clearance. What's more, adjacent property values, that's adjacent to where these CMBs are installed, have been shown to suffer, which could reduce property tax revenues. The environment will suffer too, because it's common practice for residents to drive to their CMBs and let their cars idle while they pick up their mail. So who benefits? Well, the Conference Board of Canada got a lucrative contract from Canada Post to write a report justifying cuts in delivery service. It happens that Canada Post President Deepak Chopra sits on the Board of Directors of that company. Then there are the two presidents and the 19 vice-presidents at Canada Post, who stand to receive big bonuses as a reward for cutting costs by slashing staff and services. And of course, there are the companies that build and install CMBs. Why is door-to-door mail delivery under threat? Well, Canada Post would have you believe, based on that commissioned report from the Conference Board of Canada, that it's a financial necessity. That report projected a loss of $1 billion a year by 2020, but it turns out their assumptions have proven wildly inaccurate. For example, they projected a loss in 2014 of $400 million, when in fact, there turned out to be a profit of $204 million. The report overestimated the drop in letter mail volumes and underestimated the increase in parcel volumes. So, given that the report's alarming numbers were bogus, what's the real reason for eliminating door-to-door delivery? The answer is to smooth the way to privatising the postal service. Reduced service expectations and staffing obligations would mean bigger profits. Interestingly, one of the companies lining up to cash in on this opportunity is Pitney Bose, where our old friend Deepak Chopra was president and chief executive officer before joining Canada Post. Many postal administrations are struggling to cope with the impact of falling letter mail volumes, but Canada is the first country to announce that it intends to eliminate all-home mail delivery. Other postal administrations are responding to the challenge by expanding into financial services and banking, a service that would be greatly appreciated here in rural areas, where the big banks have closed their branches. Canada's postal service is a crucial part of our national infrastructure. It should not be plundered for profit by private interests. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have, and certainly, Janseene, who lives on my letter carrier walk, would be happy to answer questions too. Thank you. Oh, and I have thousands of signatures on petitions from local citizens who are opposed to the elimination of door-to-door mail delivery.
Thank you very much. Ms. Cornell, if you just want to just stay there for a moment, are there any questions from council? Councillor Neil.
Yes. If you wish to leave that petition, we can submit that on your behalf. So if you have a petition. You mentioned you had a petition.
Submit it to whom?
Any member of council can present a petition. I'd be happy to.
Oh.
Okay. I know from following you on Facebook that, among other things, in your postal walk, you seem to know everybody and their cats and their dogs, and I'm just wondering, how much of a benefit do you think it is having somebody that visits everybody's door on a daily basis?
You know, I'd really rather have Janseene answer that.
That would be fine.
And while she's coming up, I can see that being on the ground in a neighbourhood, you notice, come on up, you notice differences, you know? I've noticed broken pipes in the winter, or doors that have been smashed in because someone broke into the house. And here's Janseene.
So you know about Pam? I think the thing, for me, I'm a Sydney Moore kid, I had letter carriers, I can remember them. They were a person that came every day, they were consistency, they were part of the community. I live now out in Reddale. Consistency. Weather doesn't depend, it didn't matter, they're there. To me, for a kid to grow up where their parents go to a box and not have Pam come to their door, wanting to know about their dog, wanting to know about the health of the person in the house, to me, that's a huge loss. My dog's on her Facebook, my flowers are on her Facebook, and not that all letter carriers go out there taking pictures, but they are representing a community, they are representing the neighbourhood and the people within. And to me, I don't know. I don't want to go to a box, I want Pam.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions, thank you very much. So our next delegation is Maggie McLaren, who appeared before council to speak to clause five, report number 61, received from the Chief Administrative Officer with respect to Homelessness Services System and Don House Funding Update.
Just wanted to make sure I hadn't reshuffled my papers. My name is Maggie McLaren, and I'm the Executive Director at Don House Women's Shelter. And this is Heather Humber, she is one of the staff who's been with Don House for how many years?
Oh, coming on a quarter of century.
Quarter of a century, quite a long time. Mayor Patterson, members of council, thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. You are all aware of the resolutions that were passed by council February 3, 2015, and found in tonight's council report 15281, on page 208. At that time, back in February, Don House was directed to submit a detailed operational financial plan subject to staff review and report to council. When the 155,455 was approved by council, it was our understanding that it was approved on the premise that Don House would continue to operate as it had been operating for the past 29 years as a 24-hour shelter. On April 10, Scott White, our Board Chair, and I met with city staff regarding developing our operational plan. At that meeting, we were told that as of July 1, Don House would be the second overflow night shelter, and that our operational plan needed to reflect this change in service delivery. This represented a big change in our operational model. We were given a plan outline, but with little operational information on how overflow shelters would work with primary shelters. We submitted questions, some were answered, and others referred to a shelter meeting held on May 7. Almost the entire meeting on May 7 was spent working on hours of operation for the overflow shelters, which left a number of other questions to be dealt with at a second meeting on May 22. Even then, not all questions were answered. Initially, we were asked to submit our plan on April 24, two weeks after our Friday meeting with city staff. Given that Don House's only administrative staff person is its Executive Director, and that would be me, and I have a full workload already, the earliest I could submit it after it was formally approved by the Board was June 2. Reading the council report that you have before you this evening, one is left with the impression that Don House staff don't understand the Housing First Model. The staff at Don House are very familiar and supportive of the model. In fact, in many ways, it has been the shelter's model for the past 29 years. Over the years, staff have been both shelter and housing workers. A woman who moved from Don House into housing would continue to be supported after she left the shelter. If a woman called in crisis or needed to know how to access community services, or fill out an application, or how to submit an application, staff supported them. This was called housing stabilisation, which is an important component of the Housing First Model. In the council report you have this evening, women continuing to be supported by Don House staff after they are housed is seen as a negative, when in fact, isn't it what the Housing First Model is all about? Housing those with the highest acuity or highest number of barriers and providing them with supports over their first year, possibly even longer. The council report suggests that women continuing to look for help from Don House staff only encourages homelessness. In 2009, Medicine Hat launched a five-year plan to eliminate homelessness and have been successful. And they still have and haven't, they didn't close shelters, and they still haven't closed They worked towards getting people housed so that no individual would spend more than 10 days in a homeless shelter, which is one of their benchmarks of success. Currently, we have women spending anywhere from two to six months in the shelter. The Housing First Model is designed to determine acuity so that services provided to the homeless are not hit and miss, not by waitlist, and not by first come served. There is recognition that those with the highest acuity are the most vulnerable. Most of the women who stay at Don House are the most vulnerable. They are assessed and referred to the Housing First Programme. Currently, out of the 10 women at the shelter, we have four women in the shelter who have been assessed as requiring a Housing First Case Manager and have been put on a waiting list for one. These assessments were done two or more months ago. Without a housing case manager, these women sit in limbo in the shelter. We anticipate it will take several months more before they can get a worker, and several months after that before they are housed. That will of course depend on whether there is a unit available, and if by that time, they have the highest acuity score.
30 seconds.
Sorry. I'm sorry?
30 seconds.
Okay. Between three full-time frontline staff, Don House is sitting with 65 years of experience working with homeless women, and their skills and experience are being underutilised. Staff continue to help women where we can and continue to help them to look for housing, but it's difficult to help a woman secure housing at $800 a month. That is not sustainable when her income may be $800 to $1,000 a month. It would get her out of homelessness for a few months, but it wouldn't stop the cycle. On page 2009 of the report to council, there is a chart which lays out shelter utilisation for the first quarter of 2015. It reports a 71% occupancy rate overall. This figure includes bed nights from all the shelters. If you look at those shelters individually, it presents a different picture.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I will give you an opportunity to answer questions from council. Are there any questions? Councillor McLaren.
Thank you. Can you tell us about how often you reach capacity in the average month?
We have been running at capacity for, since basically mid-January. So if you look at the last five months, our occupancy is 91%. Now, when we talk about occupancy, we're talking about billable nights, because those are the figures that are in the report. They talk about billable nights. Utilisation is about billing the city for nights that women are in the shelter. That doesn't necessarily mean that the shelter was not full. It may just have been that a woman ended up not coming back that night because she was drinking and had to go to detox, or was in hospital. Her bed was still there, but she wasn't there on that particular evening.
Thank you. And how often do you turn people away because you're full?
This past month, we turned away 65. Last month, actually, I probably have it here. In the month of April, we turned away 37 women, because we were full. 53 in March, and 68 last month. And out of that, 23 of those calls came from other shelters, and from the cold Lily's Place, Ryandale, and Kingston Intermodal House, because they were full and had no beds for women.
Thank you. Are there any other questions from council? Councillor Stroud.
Thank you, Your Worship. Thank you for your presentation. My question has to do with the second clause of the recommendation, that council approve an additional amount to pay for allowable expenses to assist Don House Women's Shelter in repurposing or winding down their corporation. At this point in time, if this recommendation is passed, could you predict whether you would be repurposing or winding down?
I think our intention is to repurpose, in any case, whether or not we remain open as a shelter, or whether, you know, till the end of September, or whether or not we stay open as a shelter until the end of December. Our board is looking at a number of different models, a number of different things that we can do. One of them would be leveraging, you know, our current assets to possibly purchase other buildings, where we could have housing units for the homeless, for homeless women, because that's our mandate, Don House supports women. And that is one of the things. We're also looking at some options in terms of social enterprise, so that we can support women by helping them to develop work skills, as well as decision-making skills. What else? Can you help me out here?
I mean, ultimately, I think that the intention of the board and the executive is that Don House will not cease to exist. And moving forward, the concern with winding down and repurposing is with the turnaways that we have, we're very concerned about where the women who are currently at the shelter, and the number of women that we have on an established waitlist and are turning away, are going to go. And we believe, and there is not currently, outside of, I believe, Lily's Place and the youth shelter, there's not a shelter that's open 24 hours. And there are a number of high-needs clients that, realistically speaking, could not manage outside of the shelter environment from 8:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Yeah, and so I guess you anticipated my next question, which is, what would be the effect of this recommendation on those individual women, briefly?
Do you understand that? What would be the effect of Don House closing?
Of winding down or repurposing? What would be the effect on the turning away that number of women? What would happen to them specifically in their lives?
Well, we currently have, for example, there are a number of women, two particularly, staying at the shelter, who have profound anxiety. One's, woman's anxiety is so profound that she, it borders on agoraphobia. She cannot leave the house unaccompanied, and has a worker to assist her in doing that. I can't imagine how she would function if she had to leave a shelter at 8 o'clock in the morning and return at 8:00 PM. We have women at the shelter who are senior citizens, who I can't imagine saying, "You have to leave and come back in 12 hours." And take your belongings with you, because tonight the bed might be yours, and tonight it might not be yours. And women struggling with addiction, I mean, when women come into the shelter, the fact that they have a 24-hour shelter, they have a safe place from which they can operate, they're not on the street 12 hours a day, has a profound impact on their ability to stay clean and access the supports in-house if they need to do so.
I just wanted to add to that, and that with the turnaways, I mean, we have been full, so we've been running at capacity. In fact, last month, we ran at a little over capacity, because women were sleeping on the street. And what happens with women, and we're seeing more and more of it, women showing up at Don House during the day who are not in the shelter, but they've been on the street all night. Because they're vulnerable, they don't sleep at night on the streets, so they may sit outside Tim Hortons or walk. And then they show up in the morning exhausted and tired, looking for a place to crawl up and go to sleep. And so we've allowed them to come in and sleep on the couch, or go sleep in the basement, or sleep in the backyard. And we're seeing, you know, certainly a rise in the number of women who are doing this.
Okay. Seeing no other questions from council, thank you very much. Okay. We have no more delegations this evening. We do have one briefing. Sheldon Laidman, Director, Housing and Social Services, and Pavna Varma, President and CEO at United Way, serving KFLNA, will be providing a briefing with respect to the homelessness plan. You have 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and members of council. It's been since December 2013, when the city passed its 10-year Housing and Homelessness Plan. 2014 was a planning year, and we've now, in month five of our implementation of the new homelessness system. So we thought it was an opportunity to come and provide an update as to what the system is, and some early data and accomplishments as well. Pavna Varma will follow up with our collaborative effort we have with our youth programme that's associated. So we do have, our vision for success of the plan was to create a community that provides an integrated system of housing and supports that ends homelessness. And really, the key word here is "system". We're trying to foster, instead of a group of unconnected agencies, that we're now trying to create a system for homeless and housing supports. But what does ending homelessness mean? We have defined it. It means homelessness is short-term and rare, and people no longer experience chronic or repeated episodes of homelessness. So there are seven strategies in our plan about ending chronic homelessness. The public concern and discussion about the plan has been revolved around the change in emergency shelters, and whether there'd be enough housing available. But it's really a lot more than that. It's a system reorientation, it's preventing and diverting people from homelessness, it is redefining the roles of our shelters, but it's also trying to provide options for people with the highest needs, and making sure those people have stable housing options. So Housing First is kind of the brand name for this approach that you've heard already tonight. So what is Housing First? It's essentially moving people experiencing homelessness into housing as soon as possible, without any preconditions, making sure they have the right type and intensity of supports, so that they can maintain their housing sufficiently. And probably most importantly, making sure they don't return to homelessness and continue in the cycle of homelessness. So we do have, the plan does have interim goals for what the system is looking to do in its first years. It is trying to decrease the use of shelter beds, making sure chronically homeless are housed, having a sufficient number, units of housing available, integrating the services, coordinating intake, so that all the shelters and services are coordinated with common intake protocols and procedures, and making sure people get transferred to the right programmes that they need. But longer term, by 2023, at the end of the 10-year plan, the goals are that we'll have 80% of formerly chronically homeless individuals stably housed, that shelter bed nights will be reduced by 50%, the average length of stay is seven days, and no one is homeless longer than 30 days. So those are the goals that we're seeking to establish. So through the RFP programme process, there were six agencies selected to be part of this programme, all with different mandates and within the programme. The system itself has essentially four different areas: prevention diversion, housing assistance, which includes shelters, Housing First and rapid rehousing, and homeless prevention or basic needs funding. Within that, we do have a leadership group that's been established with all the agencies, so it is more like a partnership with the city, trying to establish this new network and service, where they have been working on things like coordinated intake, training, and having common software and services. So the first part went into place on January 1, where all these four new services were implemented. We had about all the agencies hired and ramped up their services, but on July 1, will be the phase two, where the shelter changes will be instituted. So just a couple of slides about where we're at after the first quarter, which is obviously early in the system. Only about one-third of the persons that we serve are homeless. The rest, the other two-thirds, are actually housed in some way, but obviously are on the verge of homelessness. So a lot of the focus is on people who are staying in in the shelters. The majority of persons being serviced through this are people that are about to be homeless or need some small amount of support to maintain their housing. In terms of the funding, we've funded approximately 70 households to stabilize their housing with a small, with less than $1,000 per intervention, to ensure people don't get into our more expensive system. In terms of the Housing First and Rapid Rehousing, I think the thing to take from this slide is that households and individuals are receiving case management supports, even though we're only in month five of the program. People are being housed successfully and being assessed appropriately. One of the big questions always is, where will the housing come from? And this slide shows that we've acquired about 50 housing units so far through the program through various methods. Clients are approaching four months of tenancies in the program. We haven't actually had to rehouse anybody yet, even though that's an expected part of the program. We've allocated about 41 rent supplements and had some other programs to get those units. In terms of the shelters themselves, currently we have 74 funded beds. In Q1 of 2015, we're at 71% capacity in that system. So that is a reduction from 2014, where we were at over 80% capacity. On July 1st, we will implement the new system, where we have a primary system that was, has the agencies that were successful in the RFP process, those four shelters, and then we'll have two shelters potentially that are providing overflow services. And lastly, we do have two other components to the system that are somewhat unique. We do have a rural component that we're offering out of Sidney, Verona, and Charlotte Lake, same services, just in a different manner. And we have a youth component where there's a recognition that youth, while they're following the Housing First model and the other types of programs, they are a unique service and have unique needs. And we've created various things with that. But I'll turn it over to Pavna Varma to go into more detail.
Thanks, Sheldon. Your worship, members of council, city staff, members of the public, thanks for this opportunity. Thank you for those who've heard me speak before. I spoke to your Housing and Homelessness Committee. Thanks for your patience as I repeat some of the stuff. So in 2013, the United Way embarked on a pilot project in, across Canada, Kamloops and Kingston were selected to be a pilot, to look at how we could mobilize a local community to address youth homelessness. We started with three premises. One was that those impacted needed to be consulted. We needed input from those who were consulted. In this case, it was youth. We also made the assumption that anything we can do to keep youth out of the adult system is going to benefit them in the long run. And the third one was that it takes a whole community to work on this issue. It can't be done by any one organization alone. So we started with that. And we started with a lot of, had a lot of conversations with youth. And I have to say, that was the most humbling part of the process, to hear the voices of youth tell us what the issues were, but more importantly, tell us what the solutions were. They were bright, they were resilient, they are strong. And they, in no uncertain terms, told us that we had to do something differently because they did not want other youth in their footsteps to face the same things that they had faced. So we actually consulted with over 200 youth at one point, and all of them came up with the three most commonly listed reasons for youth being homeless: family conflict, no surprise, addictions and mental health, not just their own, but the families they were living with, and employment and skills development. So they talked about the need for these. We had a very powerful, vibrant leadership group. And one of the things we observed was, someone actually asked me, I think it was Michael Lee at The Wake, asked me, how many of these kids were homeless? You can't tell, because a youth who is homeless, it looks no different from any other youth. They're all in this. They go to school, they go, they couch surf, they live in very difficult situations, but they're all youth in our community, and they are the future of our community. So it's important that we support them any way we can. And they are really bright and vibrant. So we looked at developing a framework. So the youth informed our framework, and we continue to consult with youth at every stage of the step of the way. We have developed some goals and strategies. We have developed an action plan, and we have pulled it together. So these are the three things we're focusing on. One is that we have a system of care for our youth. One-third of people in shelters are youth between the ages of 16 and 24. That's one-third of people in shelters. We want to change that. We are looking at an integrated homelessness prevention program. We at the United Way and many of our partners really believe that it's really important to look at prevention, whatever we can do ahead of time. Housing options need to match the needs of the youth. So this is where we really appreciate the support of city council and city staff in appreciating that this needs a different approach, that a simple cut and paste is not going to work for our youth. So I'll leave this with you to study. Our plan is on our website. But where we are right now is what's exciting. We have actually received a large grant, because it's government funding. I'm not allowed to announce it till we have a formal announcement, but it is a grant to help us provide backbone coordination. I have to say, Kingston area is being recognized across the country as a leader in this initiative. And the reason we're being recognized as a leader is because of how many partnerships have come together for this. School boards, the municipalities, the police, mental health workers, private sector, everyone has come together to make sure that this is an issue we want to deal with. And because it's a new issue, there are some really innovative things that we have been able to start, and that's been recognized. We are talking to a lot of other communities to help them develop a similar process. These are the areas we're looking at. We do have a funders table, so we're looking very carefully at whose mandate is what and how we can balance each other's funding. Currently, the city and the United Way have realigned our funding, as have some of our funding partners, to make sure that we are addressing some of these needs. So right now, schools have got a very strong awareness and education program, and that is going to be key. We have actually committed to start in grade seven and eight, because by the time they reach high school, it's almost too late. One of the things that was very meaningful to me was one of the youth came to me and said, I'm not homeless. I have a home. I just can't go back to it. So again, their definition of homelessness is very different. And so now we have started presentations at school councils, and we're starting to develop a peer network where kids can go into schools and talk about their experience and what to do when you're homeless. One of the things they told us was that it was very hard for them to navigate where to go, because they had to call this number if they had mental health issues, this number if they were with CAS, another number if they were actually homeless, another number if they were in danger of being homeless. And so we are now, we have developed a protocol with two-on-one, where it's one point of call, and then they will get referred to a place of support, and that agency will then triage them to where they need help the most. So if they're under 16, for example, Family and Children's Services will jump in. But again, we have developed a protocol to make it simple for youth, because that's the whole idea. We've also identified family mediation. So if we can prevent youth from actually being on the streets, because number one reason youth are homeless is family conflict, so we're actually funding a family mediation worker out of the youth shelter, and that person's going to hopefully work with youth before they get homeless, work with the families, work with the youth, to see what we can do to either keep the youth in their home, or if it's not a safe situation, to get them into a place of care. One of the things we do recognize is the employment and skills development. And I would say thank you for your leadership in recognizing the need for us to do something about youth employment. We are working on that, and we are, again, engaging youth and partners across the community to come up with some solutions. And we will come back to you within the year with some of our thoughts on what we should do differently as a community. Again, it's not putting any one organization or government on the spot. It's all of us doing it together. We are looking, the housing options for youth are not the same as adults. We recognize that some youth can certainly transition into permanent housing and succeed. But we know that transitional housing, unlike the traditional housing first model, is really important for some youth. They need time to develop life skills. They need time to deal with some of the issues they're facing. And again, that's something that we need to make sure we are increasing. So right now, we are increasing the number of transitional beds, which is one of the recommendations in our report. We are developing a very strong communications plan. And again, through that grant, we are getting some funding to do this. Youth are going to help us design a communication plan targeting youth in prevention, targeting youth who are at risk, and again, helping youth who need intervention right away. The other thing we recognize is that because Kingston is the center for a lot of the services, a lot of youth are coming from rural areas. And rural homelessness is a different beast. We need to deal with it differently. Youth who are homeless in rural areas need a very specialized plan. So we will be investing, again, thanks to the grant we've received, in some, in developing plans on what we can do differently in rural areas. Again, within 18 months, we hope to have these underway. This is our theory of change, really small print. Anyone who can read that does not need any glasses. Good for you. But I will leave that behind with you, because it is something we've developed just to visualize what we're aiming for. And the start is to reduce the number of youth who are homeless 20% by the year 2020. This is where we talk about the current state and future state. We believe that if we can invest in awareness, if we can increase awareness, the amount of intervention we have to do, the center circle, which is cream-colored, will reduce. So we'll have less youth in crisis needing intervention if we can focus on awareness, not just with youth or the service providers, but for the community in general, so people know what to do when a youth is homeless, whether it's couch surfing or living on the streets. I know I probably ran over my four minutes, and I apologize, but there's more information on our website.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Kennedy?
Thank you, through you, your worship. With regards to the issue of primary shelters and overflow, are we meeting our target? I'm sure Sheldon could help me with this. Are we at an accurate number? Should we have more shelters, less shelters? Are we, are we meeting our goals and with regards to supply and demand?
Mr. Laidman?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Right now, the goal of the plan is to have a shelter utilization of 90 to 94%, to make sure that we're capitalizing on the investment we have. And right now, we're only at 70, somewhere between 71 right now, 81 last year. So I think our goal is to try to right-size the system so that we're capitalizing on that investment to get to that 90% target.
Okay, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Holland?
Thank you, your worship. Through you and the talking stick. The, one of the first slides, or I don't know, like the third or fourth here, it's the Housing First approach and outlines the goals. Yeah, thank you. It's recovery-oriented is the first one. Anyway, so the, second from the bottom, the right intensity of individualized housing case management supports to help stabilize and maintain housing, which is, I mean, caseworkers provide sort of individualized healthcare services, deal with a lot of those issues. I'm curious if you can sort of just outline the needs that are being addressed in this statement and how it, how it takes place currently, or what the goals are.
I'll do my best to state it briefly. There's kind of two streams of, depending on the types of services that you need. We assess each person through a common assessment tool to determine the types of services that are, that that household or that person needs to be successful in their housing. Depending on the types of issues that that person presents, they're put into a stream of either Housing First or Rapid Rehousing stream, which each has a different type of service. Or they're given to other workers who deal with them on a basis to maintain their housing or do small things that they may be able to maintain their housing. Each of the three kind of streams provide a different type of service depending on the person's needs. I don't know.
That's great, and actually helps illustrate what I was trying to ask, I guess, which is, this is, these are sort of smaller logistical-type supports for someone, for example, with, and with the intention of maintaining housing, for someone who suffering from a mental health or mal- issue or illness, that, how does this take place? How does it interface with the healthcare system to ensure that those supports are in place to ensure housing is maintained?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The, I think that's one of the more challenging aspects that we're in month five of this, trying to determine the protocols to make sure those connections occur. Certainly, one of the agencies that's involved in providing Housing First through our program is Frontac Mental Health and Addictions. So they are directly involved in our program, even though they're running their own separate mental health programs. But that's been something that we've been trying to focus on for the last, well, year and a half, is trying to get those protocols in place so people, the case managers can direct, connect the people with the right services so that they can be successful in their housing. But it's in its infancy, and those are some of the challenges we're having right now, certainly.
Okay, seeing no other questions. Oh, Counselor Ellen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you and the talking stick, just a couple quick questions. When you say we try to get someone placed as soon as possible, what's that timeline look like in general in month five at this point?
I'm not sure that we have good data at this point, which is something on July 1st, we'll have a new system coming into place so that everyone being assessed will go through a common software system so we can have these types of answers. I don't think we know that right now. All we know that is, is we're reaching around 40 persons being housed through this. There's been approximately 120 households, a little less than that, assessed so far through the program. So it has been successful to get people housed, but I don't think I have the answer as to the amount of wait time right now.
Thank you. And when you were answering Counselor Holland's questions, you mentioned that you're connecting them with services. Where do those services get delivered? Do they, do the caseworkers help deliver or help, do they happen in the home that we've put these people in, or do we have to get them to a facility or a place where they can be assessed for anxiety or some sort of mental health issue or other issue that they face?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I think the answer is both, actually. Each, each stream of the program has a different ratio of clients to the worker. So for instance, Housing First has a 1 to 10 ratio. So they're able to be more involved in the person's daily life and making sure that those services get connected to that person, either at their home or at another pre-arranged site. Versus other services, we're offering them at the, at shelters themselves, which are meant to be common areas that those services are provided. So it's a dual kind of approach.
Great, thank you. And just one last quick question to follow up. Are there, as of July 1st, how many shelters in our system will be operating 24 hours or in the off-hours in the evening?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. The answer, the Kingston Youth Shelter will be open 24 hours. Lily's Place, which is the family shelter, will be open 24 hours. E-Fry, which is the shelter that's providing services for vulnerable women, will provide not only the emergency shelter system service from 8 o'clock at night to the morning, but also has daytime services associated with their other programs. And In From the Cold will operate at not full 24 hours, but near to it. I don't have the exact hours.
All right, great. Thank you.
Okay, with that, thank you very much. So we have at least one petition. Petition bearing approximately 33 signatures was received by the Clerk's Department on June 11th, 2015, and reads as follows: "We have been advised that the city is making preparations for a sidewalk to be installed on the east side of Sussex Boulevard. We, the undersigned, oppose this improvement and ask that this action be canceled. It is our belief that the money being spent for this project would be better spent in some other location, which is in greater need than Sussex Boulevard. This part of Sussex Boulevard was never designed for sidewalks, and a number of beautiful mature trees would be destroyed in the process." As referred to, the President and CEO of Utilities Kingston. Are there any other petitions to present tonight? Counselor Neal?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a petition with just over 1,600 names. "We, the undersigned, call upon the Government of Canada to reverse the cuts to services announced by Canada Post, and to look instead for ways to innovate in areas such as postal banking." And I see that it's just over 1,600 signatures.
Thank you. Seeing no other petitions, we do have a motion of condolence, moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Holland. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Holland, that the condolences of Kingston City Council be extended to Dan Hazel, bylaw enforcement officer, on the passing of his mother, France Marie Hazel, on June 1st, 2015, and the passing of his grandfather, David Pooleen, on May 27, 2015. Our thoughts are with Dan and his family during this difficult time. We will call the vote. We have no deferred motions this evening. Next, I ask for report number 60 from the CAO.
It's moved by Counselor Turner, seconded by Counselor Allen, that report number 60, in the Chief Administrative Officer consent, be received and adopted.
So there are a number of clauses through L. Just to note that clause F has been withdrawn because it will now appear under the Consider Report. So given that, would anybody like any of the clauses separated? Counselor O'Neal.
Item E, please.
Item E. Counselor Allen?
Item C and, oh, wait, not item C, item B and item H, please.
So item B and item H. I'm also going to separate item C. So seeing no other separations, we will first vote on the balance. So item A is 2015 final capping limits for commercial, industrial, and multi-residential properties. Item D is John Counter Boulevard progress to construction. Item G Municipal Council blanket support resolution for rooftop and non-rooftop solar photovoltaic applications of less than 500 kilowatts made under Provincial Feed and Tariff Program. Item I, entering into land leases near McAdoo's Lane with adjacent ground mount solar projects under the Independent Electricity System Operator Large Renewable Procurement Process. Item J, award of contract, one brush chopper. Item K, award of contract, one three-quarter ton four-wheel-drive pickup truck. Item L, award of contract, one one-ton four-wheel-drive crew cab pickup truck. So we will call the vote. So item B, award of contract for construction services at Molly Maglin Park and Shannon's Corners Park. Who separated this? Counselor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you and the talking stick, I just wanted to briefly thank staff for moving quickly on these, this contract and making these improvements to these parks. Shannon's Corners Park has been in need of improvement for some time, and the community's starting to see a renewal of young families moving into the area, and so they will really benefit from that work. There is one issue with that park that needs to be addressed, and hopefully it can be considered as part of this. I know I've spoken with staff about this, but there is a baseball diamond that manages to hit the balls into people's houses fairly easily there, and we'd like to see that remedied on behalf of the citizens. I also think it could put us in a tough place if we don't do something to make sure that folks using our park are hitting other folks in the community with their balls. Let's see, Commissioner Hurdle has something to say.
Commissioner Hurdle.
Thank you, through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, the work on the ball diamond is actually scheduled and will be done as part of this project.
Fantastic, thank you.
Okay, so we will call the vote on item B. Still one person to vote, and that carries. Item C is the youth employment strategy. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I will, and I recognize you.
Thank you. I just want to note how pleased I am that this item has come forward so quickly. I've made no secret that this was certainly one of my priorities for the term. Certainly, it connects to a number of other pieces. We heard in the presentation on youth homelessness that the youth employment piece certainly connects with that. I think it also connects with our immigration strategy to make sure that when we're looking at the jobs of the future, that we're making sure that we're looking to our own young people here in our community to be able to make sure that they have the right skills so that they can fit into our labor market, so that they don't have to leave and look for jobs elsewhere. So I'm very pleased that this has come forward. I'm looking forward to the strategies that will be presented to us. I'm sure you've noticed from the report that Kingston has an unusually high youth unemployment rate for a community our size. That's a problem, but I think it's also an opportunity. It's an opportunity for us to be a leader, so I'm looking forward to being able to lead on this. So thank you.
Thank you. My return to the chair.
So we will call the vote. Item E, species-at-risk stewardship grant funding. Counselor O'Neal.
Thank you, your worship, through you and the talking stick. I just want to thank our engineering staff very much for finding this provincial funding opportunity. The McIntosh Perry Report in 2013, they identified the need for a fence at this site on Highway 2, on the Highway 2 Bridge at the Ambassador Hotel. The report also identified a second site needed just as much, which is at Collins Creek on Highway 2 in Westbrook. So it's my hope that this fall, staff will reapply for funding through the same funds and see if we can get any money for Collins Creek. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Counselor Strepp.
Thank you, your worship, through you and the talking stick. I have a question to staff on this file. With the, just pure mathematics, now that we have secured grant funding, what happens to the money raised by the community and the money pledged already by council on this file?
Mr. Van Buren.
Through your worship, the grant funding is actually being added to the original funding of $61,200, which was raised 50% through some successful community fundraising efforts and the other 50% from the tax base. So the overall budget will be amended, or has already been amended, to increase by the amount of the $59,000 in the grant funding. Those monies, as the report indicates, are going to be used to include some additional turtle exclusion fencing and also to prepare for some turtle nesting areas within the study area.
Thank you for that. I think it's great when we actually exceed our own expectations, not only with the community fundraising effort, but with the successful grant. That's great, and it's a great, good news story. Thank you.
Okay, we will call the vote. Item H, request for proposal process to lease of Kingston East landfill for ground mount solar project. Counselor Allen.
Thank you, your worship, and I'm going to stand for this one and through you and the talking stick. I just want to thank staff for bringing this forward as well as item I. They're two great programs and ideas that will bring us some of that revenue that doesn't come from our residents. We'll be able to tax these developments and also potentially lease the land to a developer and earn money through those leases. And that's the kind of thing we want to see happen, taking advantage of programs that exist that better our community. We want to be a green community. We want to lead with renewable energy, and we're doing that through these appropriately selected suggested sites through staff. It is been, it has been tough, though, on the community, and I want to, and many of us have seen the planning applications, have gotten the calls and the emails, and when it comes to renewable energy, it's still difficult for the council and for our staff to be able to do the work that needs to happen to make sure that the residents have their say, that we're able to promote these energies in a sustainable way and point developers to the right places to go. And I think this way here is a great example of pointing developers to where we would like to see these be developed and avoid damaging communities or impacting communities that would otherwise be hit adversely by some of these developments. I encourage staff to consider through the official plan process and through everything else that we're going through, that we continue to bring these renewable projects forward in such a way that they support our community. So thank you to staff for bringing this forward. This is a great way for us to lead in terms of renewable energy and partner with potential revenue-generating sources. Thanks.
Thank you. We will call the vote. And that carries. Report number 61 from the CAO.
It's moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Shaw, that report number 61 from the Chief Administrative Officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
So to begin with the first clause, we have a recommendation from our CAO, George Hunt, on the strategic priorities.
Thank you very much through you and Mr. Mayor and the talking stick and to members of council, members of the public, staff. So we have now prepared a macro-level implementation plan to support council strategic priorities. I don't have a presentation tonight to walk through all of the various strategies. Suffice to say that there's a lot of information in here about what is going on, what we're planning to deliver to you, and a note to you to indicate that there is some additional scope and information that we need to discuss over the course of time with you, and we're recommending that in the form of a committee of the whole format so that we can have input from all of council, similar to the way we handle the priorities planning sessions, so that we can deliver a scope or identify a scope for some of the projects. And that will come forward as time goes on for some of the areas that we need your advice on to make sure that we're clear on the strategy. So I guess I'm just giving you a heads up that your strategies and your priorities are not, you know, going to go up on a shelf somewhere and, you know, we just work on them when we can. We're going to continue to make this an iterative process. I'd like to thank staff for their input into this report and also for the staff's commitment to deliver on these priorities. I have no doubt that we will, we will meet your expectations. And it is a challenge, but in the absence of having direction and parameters within which to work, sometimes it becomes a bit of a free-for-all. So we're very much encouraged by the fact that we do have direction, the priorities, and the parameters. I wanted to talk a little bit about the approach. I believe that we're in a situation where, you know, as a community, we're in a different state than we've probably ever been since amalgamation. I feel energy in this community that I haven't felt since I came to it in 1999 and energy in this organization. And that comes from the vision, I think, that you have created, and it comes from the clarity of the priorities that has been created and the spirit within which we have seen this council and staff develop that working relationship. But what is important and is definitely threaded through this report is the notion that the council and the staff of the City of Kingston cannot do this on their own. This is really about how do we encourage and enable and facilitate the community to step up and be all the community can be for ourselves so that at the end of the day, we create a great community and we have the pride of that community to go along with reinforcing the outcomes. The report does talk about some recommendations, does ask you to approve a couple of recommendations, and I would simply like to describe why they are in the report in the format that they are in here. First recommendation is just to receive this macro strategy. It's obviously not in a great level of detail because that detail will come in ongoing work plans and budgets and those sorts of things. The second one has to do with a number of strategies laid out in Part B in terms of how do we collectively achieve the various elements without having major service impacts or major changes to frontline services or employee groups. The third one has to do with aligning much of the capital expenditures with your priority list. So if in our 10-year, 15-year plans, we don't have things in the right year, we will get them into the right year with appropriate funding for you. The fourth one has to do with challenging the community to support the implementation of the vision and the plan. That's what I spoke about a few minutes ago. The third, the fifth one has to do with some direction to staff to continue to work with organizations to develop positive relations and align our work plans to deliver on and promote effective community development. The sixth one is absolutely critical in our mind. As you know, approximately 30 to 35% of the tax base goes to fund external agencies and boards. We need external agencies and boards to understand that we have a challenge in front of us, and we need to challenge the way business is done, and we need to challenge the way the request for funding also comes to council. These words are deliberately established here because sometimes I think that it's difficult for us to represent the overarching priorities when there are so many priorities that are established within individual boards as well. So this is a call to participation. And if done correctly, we will have good support and good community building from these partners. And I can tell you that in the past five years, we have had great success in trying to have the partners understand that we can't deal with large spikes in requests for budgets and things of that sort. So this is just taking one more step, just as you have challenged us to have a tax increase and find potentially over three years, $5 million worth of savings. This is a call out to them to participate in that savings request. The seventh one has to do with the whole transition to open government. And at the AMIN policy meeting, those of you who were on the table last week, there was a good discussion about what open government, government meant. And we can say that, you know, we, we do think we have openness in government, we just don't have things organized in such a way that data can be pulled from different sources in a very convenient manner to help people understand how to use that or be able to interpret that particular data. What this really means is that we don't want to increase taxes in order to develop open government. What we, what we mean to do here is to invest and change the way we do our business, probably with technology solutions and other, to be able to bring the practices and foundational principles of open government into the way we operate so that it becomes a way to operate, not in addition to how we operate. The eighth item has to do with Utilities Kingston, given our success in fiber optics, our recognition as a top-seven community in 2014 in the world, to request that organization to help us understand what we should do next to create a smarter city from a technological perspective and to allocate dividends from that already successful business to focus on investments related to smart technology. And the last one has to do with simply a request to our organization, Kingston Accommodation Partners, to come to council and help council understand what they have just created as part of a tourism strategy focusing efforts on marketing Kingston and focusing on the target audience of today and tomorrow. And we think, this is my opinion, we think that, or I think, I would rephrase it, that they have gone a long way to already establishing a integrated tourism strategy. know how we're doing against those priorities. And if I could take two seconds, I'd just like to ask Colleen Garor, Director of Strategic Communications, to come and give us a little bit of a briefing on how technology will work and how, what we're building so that we can actually make this into that technology-based strategic plan. Thank you.
So, what you're looking at is a draft of a micro site that we are developing. Why it's a micro site really isn't that important. It's really just to let us get around the design limitations of the, of our official site, but it will be seamless. It will be available on the city's website and seamless. It has been designed. You will see your priorities across the top. Please understand that all of the photographic images in here and the icons that you see as well as the text are really just placeholders. These are to be developed as well as the level of detail we need to discuss as well. So, what we're looking at is a page that will be adaptable for mobile. So, it is a single page that is scrollable. You can move around on it based on what you might be interested in. It will take you throughout the document to different levels of detail. What I think is really exciting about this site, though, is the timeline. So, if you scoot to the bottom of the page, what we see here is a priority timeline. And again, the screen is a little bit different and this isn't an actual webpage yet that I'm showing you. It's not live. But what this allows us to do is to act, is to show people when work is being done. Sorry, I'm having trouble with the touchpad here. But it allows people to see when exactly we're working on different tasks within each of the priorities. And what's really cool is that if somebody's interested in, say, fostering an open for business culture, they can click there and it takes them to a scrollable image up on top where they can get more information. The information in there, it does allow for some scrollable text, so we can put more information in there. We can also link to more information on a discrete webpage for that, for that information. And here's the really neat thing is that as we report in the annual report each year, rather than this being a discrete document in the annual report, something different that may not mesh for people, we can actually input all of the successes of the year right directly back into the strategic priorities webpage. So, people can see the achievements against the priorities in a single place. So, I think it's pretty exciting. We're definitely looking, you will see on here that what doesn't seem to be working is that as all of these images come in there, there's, they're actually animated. So, as you scroll down, the images come in as you arrive at them. Oops. And we're also going to be looking at moving away from some of the more traditional kinds of photography that we use and getting things, getting photographs that involve people doing things so that it'll be, I think, a lot more energetic, a lot more vibrant. So, that's what we're looking at doing. And if you have any questions about the site, I will certainly attempt my best to answer them. I'm just so sorry you can't see the animation.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Seeing none. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we will then move right to item 1B. It's the 2015 to 2018 Council's Strategic Priorities Implementation Plan. As the CAO mentioned, there are a number of clauses. Anyone like to speak to it? Seeing none. Counselor Hutchison?
Through you, Mr. Mayor and the talking stick and to the counselor. We understand that. We also realize in the priorities that one of the principles is to continue to deliver within the framework of sustainability and sustainable community plan. One of the concerns that we have, given that council has set a vision of a smart and livable city, if we, if we take the same approach or if we go back to the approach of asking the community what it, renew its plan, then we think that that's going to create confusing, it's going to, confusion. It's going to take staff off of the course that you've put us on with this vision and it's also going to consume resources at a time when we believe that you intend the vision to be a smart and livable city and we can move forward on that. And we can also use that to leverage the sustainable Kingston community vision, all moving forward on the goal of becoming Canada's most sustainable city. So, there was some careful consideration put into that so that we didn't create confusion, but at the same time, we move forward on the basis of the, of the vision.
Okay. So, we will, oh, Deputy Mayor Holt?
Thank you, Your Worship. And through you, I just wanted to say thank you to staff in particular for the proactive approach to the food security needs in Kingston. During our strategic planning session, this was something that didn't have a lot of time dedicated to it, but it's obvious that there's work underway, which we'll hear more about. There'll be more recommendations. I'm really happy to know all this. And I think this sort of speaks to a bigger point, which is that having the strategic plan now, and of course, these technological resources that we're looking at will allow us to understand the progress of the work that's been done to date, whereas I have to admit as a new counselor going into a new term, there has been a lot of time trying to spend, you know, trying to figure out where we're at with certain projects and priorities. So, I appreciate the fact that that will be a lot more straightforward and, and the content of the plan is, seems to reflect not necessarily every single desire, but the ones that were not necessarily articulated as fully. Thank you.
Counselor George?
Thank you, Your Worship. Through you and the talking stick. I actually want to thank staff for putting this report together. And I think if in the future, members of council have issues with it, rather than trying to belittle staff in the public forums such as this, they should maybe take the time to call them before the meeting. I do want to say, though, that under the political strategies with upper level governments, they talk about following strategies that are provided now and may evolve over time. And I just wanted to mention that the four items that are listed here are currently on AMO's agenda already. And I will be speaking to some of these actually over the next couple of days when I'm attending the AMO meeting in Port Credit. So, it is something we want to continue to pursue, obviously through our staff as well, but I just want to make it also known to everyone that it is on the agenda and these are items that I know my colleagues on the Large Urban Caucus, we're all in full support of this and will be certainly addressing it through our AMO assistance to the province in hopes that they will come good with some of these items over the next few years. Thank you, Your Worship.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I will and I recognize you.
Thank you. There's, there's a lot of meat in this particular recommendation, certainly very supportive of the work that's been presented to us. And as was said, this is going to be an iterative process over the next three and a half years where we're going to work through some of the details here. I just want to bring, highlight to one of the clauses that says that council challenged the community to support the implementation of council's vision and priorities by pursuing individual strategies to advance a smart, livable city. And again, that really reflects that we're used to kind of telling staff what to do, but now we're telling ourselves what it is that we're going to do. And it's really a matter of going out and selling this vision and building partnerships and fostering the community collaboration so that we can move together. So, it's not a matter of in City Hall, we're going to go in this direction and then other agencies are going to go in that direction and then other organizations are going to go in that direction. But it really is a matter of harnessing what I think is one of our competitive advantages as a city our size, is that we can speak to everybody, that we all know each other, that it's a small town and that we can all coordinate and we can all move in the same direction together. So, I think there's really incredible potential there if we can embrace that power of partnership. So, so we're all receiving our marching orders tonight. So, I look forward to, to starting those conversations and what will come from it. So, thank you.
Thank you. May I return to the chair?
Counselor Neal?
Thank you. I just, I appreciate that the CAO in his presentation mentioned the idea of having a number of committee of the whole meetings to review our progress on our strategic priorities. We also had, I thought, a very good strategic priority session in the last term of council. And somehow, over the four years, we seemed to get sidetracked into casinos and electoral boundaries and all kinds of other things that kind of pulled us away, I, I believe personally, from some of those goals that we'd set for ourselves. So, I look forward to either on an annual basis or semi-annual basis, having a committee of the whole meeting so we can see, we can kind of vet what we've done to actually achieve some of the goals that we've set for ourselves. So, I look forward to that.
Thank you. So, we will call the vote. And that carries unanimously. Item 2, Small Business Acceleration Center at 623 King Street West. Counselor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. One question before I say how much I think this is a fantastic idea. The application to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, I take it that's a formality. We don't expect any problems with, with that application being accepted.
CAO Hunt?
Through you, Mr. Mayor and the, and the talking stick. Well, we haven't done that before, so I wouldn't say it's necessarily a formality. We're doing, we're doing the research now. We understand that other municipalities have done these things. We've been looking for a way to, to embrace some of the opportunities that do exist under the municipal act, and this is one of them. So, we're, we will be moving forward with this application as if council approves this recommendation. And we believe from our discussions with the ministry that it should be fairly straightforward.
Thank you for that. And I also noticed a discussion of using the Harold Harvey parking lot for this business accelerator, which fits in very nicely with many of the discussions we've been having about using parking. A church uses it one day, a theater uses it another time and during the daytime. Very good utilization of a, of a city space to even have that suggestion. So, thank you very much.
Counselor Hutchison?
Through you, Your Worship. Through you and the talking stick. I just want to say that this is great. I've been talking and lots of other people have been talking about incubator space for years, it seems. So, I was very happy to be going through this agenda and say, wow, look at that. And congratulate staff on, on the work that's gone into this and their initiative they've shown and the, the gaps that I tried to fill to get this to be done. It's even rent-free space, which I remember checking up on Portland, which is always seems to be ahead of everybody, you know, and they have rent-free space and wondering why we couldn't do that when there are, of course, lots of good reasons why it's hard to do. So, anyway, I just want to congratulate staff on that and thank them for doing this. And I, I look forward to seeing this happen. I like the form where entrepreneurs will mentor the younger business people. This really works. It reminds me of the Montregon way of doing business in a part of Spain, which has been going on for decades now. And they choose the ones they, they champion the ones they want to see work. Perhaps this will work somewhat in the same way, but it certainly works in lots of places and it's good to see us doing it. Thank you.
Counselor Allen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you and the talking stick. I also am very encouraged by this. I think we need to have these pipelines. I think this will go great with our youth employment strategy. I think it will help bring university students with great ideas, a place to realize those ideas. We've been looking at these kinds of things in the, in the city for a while and we've been hunting for places for these opportunities and I hope more of them pop up. And I'm glad that we're getting involved in it. I, I do have a couple of questions. One question is, some of this sort of reminds me a bit of the TET in terms of the TET being a hub for small businesses that are, are growing and benefit from being in the same place together. And will we have similar requirements in terms of our requirements of the not-for-profit that we have of the TET Center not-for-profit if we move forward with this?
CAO?
Through you, Mr. Mayor and the talking stick to the counselor.
King Street West. Councillor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. One question, before I say how much I think this is a fantastic idea. The application to the Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, I take it that's a formality. We don't expect any problems with that application being accepted.
CEO Hunt.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, and the talking stick. Well, we haven't done that before, so I wouldn't say it's necessarily a formality. We're doing the research now. We understand that other municipalities have done these things. We've been looking for a way to embrace some of the opportunities that do exist under the municipal act, and this is one of them. So, we will be moving forward with this application, if council approves this recommendation. And we believe, from our discussions with the ministry, that it should be fairly straightforward.
Thank you for that. And I also noticed a discussion of using the Harold Harvey parking lot for this business accelerator, which fits in very nicely with many of the discussions we've been having about using parking. A church uses it one day, a theater uses it another time, and during the daytime. Very good utilization of a city space to even have that suggestion. So, thank you very much.
Councillor Hutchinson.
Thank you, your worship, through you and the talking stick. I just want to say that this is great. I've been talking, and lots of other people have been talking about incubator space for years, it seems. So I was very happy to be going through this agenda and say, wow, look at that. And congratulate staff on the work that's gone into this, and their initiative they've shown, and the gaps that I tried to fill to get this to be done. It's even rent-free space, which I remember checking up on Portland, which always seems to be ahead of everybody, you know, and they have rent-free space. And I'm wondering why we couldn't do that, when there are, of course, lots of good reasons why it's hard to do. So, anyway, I just want to congratulate staff on that, and thank them for doing this. And I look forward to seeing this happen. I like the form where entrepreneurs will mentor the younger businesspeople. This really works. It reminds me of the Montregon way of doing business in a part of Spain, which has been going on for decades now. And they choose the ones they, they champion the ones they want to see work. And perhaps this will work somewhat in the same way, but it certainly works in lots of places, and it's good to see us doing it. Thank you.
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, through you and the talking stick. I also am very encouraged by this. I think we need to have these pipelines. I think this will go great with our youth employment strategy. I think it will help bring university students with great ideas, a place to realize those ideas. We've been looking at these kinds of things in the city for a while, and we've been hunting for places for these opportunities. And I hope more of them pop up. And I'm glad that we're getting involved in it. I do have a couple questions. One question is, some of this sort of reminds me a bit of the TET, in terms of the TET being a hub for small businesses that are growing and benefit from being in the same place together. And will we have similar requirements, in terms of our requirements of the not-for-profit that we have of the TET Center not-for-profit, if we move forward with this?
CEO.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, and the talking stick, to the councillor. At this point in time, we're, you know, this is in a concept stage. We're trying to, we're trying to determine how we can make this work. We're using this as a pilot period. We're going to work with the board to determine what the parameters would be, how the operation would work, what, how long people could stay and then have to move out, what the potential of the businesses could be. We're estimating that it should have, at some point in time, have the ability to have revenue generation of about $100 million. So these are substantial businesses. In my vision, quite honestly, I see them moving from here into rented space, getting three or four, or five, or 10 employees, and then moving into our business parks, so that they can become large employers in the city of Kingston. I fundamentally believe that that's possible. And so, every model that we've tried to create has been, I think, is a bit unique. The TET Center model is unique. And, you know, the staff here, including Commissioner Beach, worked hard to come up with that model, to make it successful, to, at the same time, put some accountability and strings to it, so it's not free. And I would say that this is not necessarily free either, because you only get the benefit of the, of the space for a short period of time, and then you have to move on and create that sort of thing. We've worked with other groups, including groups that are now using the Harold Harvey and other places, to find success for them with limited, limited and extracted support from the city, if you will. And so, we're looking forward to, you know, the first year of how this is going to operate, and then building on that. And I can honestly see that this may be successful. We hope it will. That would maybe then mean a second or a third building could be identified, that we could put to use that's currently underutilized.
Thank you. And just to encourage, if there's some difficulty finding tenants, there's different approaches. This report outlines a tenancy of maybe two to three years, and you mentioned that that might not be set in stone at this point. So, most acceleration programs that I'm familiar with, especially in software, are six months to a year. And so, I'm just interested to see what comes out of it, and I'm going to trust staff to kind of deliver on that. I also just want to see a diversity of small businesses be accelerated, such as social enterprises. We've heard from one of the presentations earlier today, that they were looking at becoming a social enterprise. And we want to encourage and provide those supports. And if we can do that, I know there's already a social enterprise and innovation center in Kingston, but we can help all these groups work together as the city, as a partner. You had something to say, I guess?
CEO.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to add that this in no way changes the role that we're playing as ambassadors and facilitators with Innovation Park and what's going on at the Innovation Park scope of business research. In fact, we continue to hold very positive discussions with Innovation Park, Queen's University, and with KEDCO involved in that. And we'll continue to foster the creativity out of that opportunity as well. So this is, this is not intended to compete or conflict with that. It's just an opportunity that we think is grassroots entrepreneurship that deserves a chance.
Thank you, CEO, for your comments. I think that this will be a great contributor to our emerging entrepreneurial ecosystem. I'm doing alliteration now. But thank you for your comments. I'm looking forward to seeing it. I think it's a great way to repurpose a beautiful space, historic space. It's literally history and innovation thriving together in the best way possible.
Councillor Cannon.
Thank you, through you, your worship, and the talking stick. I too am very optimistic about this, as everybody is, I'm sure. I just wanted to point out that it is, it is a very resourceful way to go about creating some of our objectives. We're not doing it in such a way that we're throwing piles of money at a thing to achieve a goal. As far as our, the city budget goes, we're putting a small amount of money towards something. We're repurposing a building in a resourceful way. And we're going to get huge bang for a buck for this. This could be the best money we spend as far as overall result goes. The sky's the limit with this. But the beauty is, it's not costing us an enormous amount of money. We're achieving our goals at a reasonable rate, very reasonable rate. This has huge potential, and we're not spending a huge amount of money to achieve our goals. So, for that reason, I support this.
Thank you. We will call the vote. And that carries. Item three, Kingston Airport Expansion Service Level Environmental Assessment Requests and Proposals. We will call the vote. And that carries. Item four, Canada 150 Community Infrastructure Program Application. We'll call the vote. And that carries. Item five, Homelessness Services System and Don House Funding Update. Call the vote. Oh, someone want to speak? Councillor Strout.
Thank you, your worship, through you and the talking stick. Just to draw attention to the way this recommendation reads, it is actually taking the previous motion and the money that was allocated, and splitting it in half, and allocating it half to, as you see the two clauses there, half to provide emergency shelter for the next three months, starting July 1st, and the second half, the repurposing or winding down that I asked a couple of questions about earlier when there was a presentation. The, I think that, just to cut to the chase, I think that this really is a fundamental difference than the, from the original intent of the motion that was passed at budget time. And I, I think that we might want to think about this for a minute before we approve this recommendation, because the original motion that passed was to help Don House continue to operate as it operates. And we heard from the executive director that that is their wish. So this is actually a life-changing event for Don House if we pass this. And I think we need to take a moment to consider it.
Thank you. Next on my list is Councillor Neal.
Yes, thank you very much. I know that the original motion that passed at council spoke about looking for options in the plural. And I think what's being suggested here is more of a focused, single. So, council isn't really being given an opportunity to consider options in the plural, which was the direction given, I believe, by the original motion. So, I do believe that it's fixable. I do believe, as we heard from the delegation today, that, I mean, this is an organization that's almost 30 years old. It has tremendous support in the community. It's worked hard over the years. And yes, it will, as all shelters will need to, adjust somewhat how they provide their service, because we have a broader, more comprehensive program that we're trying to institute. And, and I recognize that. The, in the briefing we received, there was talk about independent or individual, I forget the expression that was used, but as if shelters currently, or in the previous system, never spoke to one another. And in speaking to friends who, over the years, have worked in the shelter system, and speaking to some of the people in the shelter system, there's always been a sense of collaboration, and reaching out, and assisting one another in trying to do what's best for the people who show up at their doorstep. And I, so for that reason, I'm, I'm looking forward to an amendment that will kind of hit the pause button a little bit, and give the opportunity to, to come back with more than just one option, and some reflection, perhaps through our Housing and Homelessness Committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor McLaren.
Thank you. I don't think that it's a wise idea to start off by closing a shelter that is full. We heard just a few moments ago from the executive director that their occupancy rate is 91%. They're turning away people because they're too full. And if we look at the report that was given to us by staff at this point, thinking on page three out of 16, their, staff's ideal occupancy rate for emergency shelters is 90 to 94%. 91% is right in that field, is right within that range. It would strike me that this particular shelter is meeting the criteria that is set out here. If you look at the actual numbers that they give for other shelters, they are below that. They are below the threshold that they're being asked for. These are the ones that the Housing First model is working for. For these other shelters, there is a surplus. But there's something special about Don House that is not being met with this particular model at this time. It may be met soon. It may be met after it's better implemented. But what we've heard so far is that it's only five months old. And yet, Don House is 100, is full. They're turning away people. Whereas, other ones are down to 71%, 77, 89. They're below the goals, the ideal. So what I'm suggesting is that, well, continuing on with that report, actually, is that the thing that might be special about this is that they're actually seeing an increase in the women, in women that are staying at the shelter, because the case managers' caseloads are too full. This may be one reason that the Housing First model has not been fully implemented yet. And it may be too early to close a shelter that's full. And that's part of what this, the original motion was designed to achieve. If I may continue on, on page nine of Don House's report, "For many of the women who stay at Don House, it is a safe place, where the abused can escape from their abusers, where addicts can avoid places and people that trigger their addiction, and where those with poor mental health can find acceptance." If we're to close this, as was proposed at the end of the month, what would happen to these people? They would fall back into their old patterns. Don House is providing a particular and special service that is not being fulfilled yet, because they're at full capacity. We can see that. That's what their numbers say. Additionally, if you continue on in that report, on to page 13 of the report, "There is an underlying sense of panic at the shelter. Several women with severe anxiety, who have made progress well at Don House, are now regressing because of the anxiety that we're creating by threatening to close the shelter." I would submit to you that it is inappropriate, at this point, to close a shelter that is at capacity. And part of the problem is that we have a new model that's being implemented right here. And a model by definition is an abstraction from reality. If you have reality, you take key points out of it, and you get a model. But every model leaves behind a great amount of reality. And in this case, the current model may need some tweaking. It may need some improvement. But whatever is missing from that model, Don House seems to be filling right now, because there is a huge demand for it, and it hasn't seemed to be addressed. So what I'm suggesting is that we look for more options. The report that's being presented to us here has suggested essentially repurpose or close. Repurpose and then close. I'm suggesting that whatever is special about Don House needs to be reevaluated. And I'm not an expert. I don't know exactly what it is. But it's important that we find out what it is, in order to provide the best service to the people of Kingston. To that end, I would like to move a motion to amend, which I believe the clerk has already seen. And I'll read it here. It's to add to the existing motion that staff be directed to report back to the Housing and Homelessness Advisory Committee for the purpose of, one, identifying options, more than just one, to keep Don House open beyond 2015. Two, to get expert advice, because I'm not exactly qualified. I can see from a big picture that there is something that is missing, or not fully implemented yet in the original plan, but that Don House is providing that service. And three, to get public input, because it's important that in an open democracy, we listen to the people who are most affected, and who are most vulnerable in this case. So I'm suggesting this amendment, and I hope that you will consider it as an addition to it. I might also add that, and it has been vetted by staff, and the commissioner has agreed that this would be a good idea. Thank you.
Thank you. So, there is a motion to amend that's been put on the floor by Councillor McLaren. It has been seconded by Councillor Neal. Is there any further discussion on the amendment only? Councillor Strout.
Thank you, your worship, through you and the talking stick. One question to staff. I'm just wondering if other options were perhaps considered in this process, but didn't make it onto the report, that would have been in line with the original motion, that to help Don House survive in its current mandate? And if so, what would, what was actually considered?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Ms. Mayor. Maybe I can get started, and my team can jump in and add. I think, I mean, ultimately, what we would like to see is, we would like to see Don House be fully part of the system that, and the plan that council has endorsed, in terms of the housing and homelessness, and not have all the other agencies kind of working in terms of that system, and having Don House as a little bit of an outside agency, in terms of not necessarily fitting within the services that have been redefined and so on. And in order to do that, obviously, we, it's not just what staff think, or what, what we think Don House should do. It's also what Don House would like to do. So we need to make sure that we have this process. And I think we heard the comments tonight, where they're interested in looking at repurposing, regardless if it's September or later, that that's what they're looking at. So we're, we're very encouraged by that. And then we would like to continue that dialogue with Don House. And we'd be happy to bring those options forward to the Housing and Advisory, Housing and Homelessness Advisory Committee.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Holland.
Thank you, your worship. And through you, a question to staff regarding the timing. So if we're, I don't know when the next Housing and Homelessness Advisory Committee is meeting, but do we have to approve the first part of this, in order to be sure that the funding exists to continue the process?
Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, because currently, we do not have the authority to continue to fund Don House beyond the current contract that we have. So we didn't get, obviously, that direction in terms of entering into an agreement further than June 30th. So that's why we're, we're proposing that the recommendation that is there would enable us to continue to do that.
Thank you, once again. And his worship was very generous there, because I was not speaking to the amendment, unfortunately. Okay, so, yeah, so I'm going to save my...
I would argue that you could say that that was a reasonable question to ask, in terms of whether or not you want to vote for the amendment, so.
I will save my comments for the main motion. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else on the amendment? Councillor Cannon.
Thank you, through your worship and the talking stick. When looking at options, I feel like that may be wordsmithing a bit, in the sense that options and repurposing can kind of mean the same thing to a certain degree. It's a little bit open-ended. When we say expert advice and public input, I'm not sure who would be giving the expert advice. Are we paying for that? Are we, that may be something that, it may be clarified in more detail, because then we may be giving people preferential treatment. I think that all, I said this before in the original motion that, that got us here, I just want to avoid giving specific individuals preferential treatment, because all nonprofits are noble causes. But I feel as though we can't handpick them and give people preferential treatment. And for that reason, I feel that I can't support this motion, because I feel like it is, it's giving people... is, it's giving people preferential treatment.
Thank you. Anybody else on the amendment? Council Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you and the talking stick. I'll support this amendment to the motion in terms of providing a good process, a public process. This is a community organization that serves a community, and its value to the community has been demonstrated many times in many different ways. I think it behooves us to help find where this organization might fit in the new system as Commissioner Hurdle suggested, and where their approach to things can be a supportive part of our system and our community. And so I think that this amendment helps us get there, and so I'll support this amendment.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I will, and I recognize you.
Thank you. I think that the big challenge with the Housing First model is that it requires a lot of change, that we can't manage these issues the way that we've always managed them. And it requires our partner agencies and shelters in the city to, to change, to introduce new ways of looking at things, new ways of working together, but with an end goal of not just managing homelessness, but actually getting to a point of ending it. And I think that's a really exciting goal. But we do need a buy-in from everybody. And the way that I see this motion is, I don't think that this is suggesting preferential treatment. It would only be preferential treatment if we had all of the shelters moving in one direction, and then we were continuing to fund one shelter that was not buying into that system. That would be preferential treatment. In my view, the way I read this, is that this is really directing staff and the Housing Homelessness Committee to find a way to get Don House to fit into this overarching strategy that we have, moving towards that Housing First model. And I think that that's really got to be clear, that the recommendation here is not talking about closing Don's House, it's really allowing for this option of repurposing and aligning. And we heard from the delegation that they're open to that and that they're already moving in that direction. So I think that there's really an opportunity here to work together to be able to fit Don House into that, that framework. So I'm happy to, to support the amendment, but at the end of the day, we have to keep in mind that we are managing change, but it's a good kind of change. So if we can help to work together to make that change happen, then I think that's best for our community. So thank you.
Thank you, and I return the chair.
Thank you. Anybody else on the amendment? Seeing no other comments, we will call the vote then on the amendment. Please vote. And that carries by a vote of 11 to 1. On the motion as amended, so Council Stroud, Councilor Neil, and Council McLaren have spoken. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Deputy Mayor Holland, did you want to speak?
Right, thank you. So, okay, it's a question that I have, through you and the talking stick. I'm just, I'm curious about the process. Everybody seems to be moving in the direction that this, that the advice that comes out of the committee will be, will, will work and allow everything to continue to function. So I'm just curious about the timing in relation to the amounts that are allocated in these two clauses. So we have one amount till the end of the summer. How does all of this tie in with the schedule of meetings and what recommendations would be brought back by that committee?
Who wants to take that? Commissioner Hurdle.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So the, first of all, I know that the amendment indicates that we would report back to the next Housing and Homelessness Committee, and just to let council know that we'll probably be at a higher level because that meeting is taking place in July, so there is not a lot of time between now and actually that meeting, and there will need to be more discussions with, with Don House. The funding that's identified in terms of the first $77,000 will be to enable them to continue their regular operations as they have, as they have been and as described in the report. The second portion of that $77,000 is to help in terms of repurposing, should Don House choose to move in that direction, which we heard tonight, that's what their intent is. So we want to work with them to utilize these funds to be able to move them along in terms of their, their plans and transition and repurposing. And what we would do, obviously, is we would most likely bring something to the Housing and Homelessness Committee, which would then make its way to ARC and then eventually to council.
Okay, so we will call the vote then on the motion as amended. Still one person to vote. And that carries. Report number 62 from the CAO.
It's moved by Council Turner, seconded by Council Holland. The report number 62 from the Chief Administrative Officer. Consider, be received, and adopted clause by clause.
So there are now two clauses, taking into account the motion that is now on the added. So just for, for new councilors, this is probably the first time we've seen a consider report. So in both clauses, there are different options. So what I will do is I will look for someone to move and second one of the options. Then we will debate. If it passes, that's fine. If it fails, then there will be an opportunity for someone else to move the opposite option. So with that, who would like to move one of the options? So Deputy Mayor Holland?
I move option A.
So Deputy Mayor Holland has moved option A. That is seconded by Council Neil. Would anyone like to speak to it? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm delighted to see this option. I think it is following in the direction that the previous council started, where we initiated, we, they initiated, a pilot project to encourage young riders and also help with congestion and all the other issues that go along with having students dropped off at high school and/or not being able to access transit because they can't necessarily afford it in some cases. So the fact that that, that initiative was really innovative, it seemed to really coincide with the development of a really good transit system here in Kingston, one that is enviable. Other jurisdictions look at this transit system and are astonished to know how well it's working and how quickly it's growing. And so with that, we want more riders, and that's what this, these pilot projects have been working towards, and doing so in cooperation with the school board. This is something that we want to see more of, of course. So it's very exciting to see this option come forward. Not only does it address the, the final group, the cohort that has not currently been served by this program, which are grade 12s currently, in grade 12, as they head out this week after they're done in their exams, looking for work for the summer, looking for job opportunities in the, in the new year. So it's wonderful to see that, and also to see that council seems to have gone through this iterative process, trying out this program, understanding the value in it, and continually expanding it. So I'm delighted to see that, and I would just draw attention to some of the other issues that we discussed earlier this evening that support the expansion of this, the fact that we have a youth employment strategy that we're going to be working towards. Transit is, is a means towards ensuring that, that youth are not only able to explore options in employment, but that they're not limited in their options. And also, we heard a lot about shelter use this evening already, and the third, in the United Way report cited the fact that a third of shelter users are youth. So we, and also in the Youth Employment Report, we see that about a quarter of residents living under LICO in the city are youth. So we have the statistics to validate expanding our transit system, making it more accessible and affordable to this group. There, I would argue, probably the most pivotal group we could be targeting right now, given our other objectives. So for that reason, I'm, I'm very delighted to see this option, and I would encourage everyone to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Allen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and through you and the talking stick. I wrestled with this, actually, I wrestled with this ever since it came across council's table about a year ago, and when the previous council voted to include grade 11 students on this. This is, we're looking at subsidizing a certain form of transportation for a certain group that likely will be leaving, or many will be leaving the system and not using it for who knows how long. All transportation is subsidized, I understand that. We build roads and all sorts of transportation uses that. But we have to kind of take a look at this program and ask ourselves, what are we trying to achieve? Who are we trying to serve with, with our transit system? And where, where's our benefit from, from the transit system coming from? Without getting too deep into becoming, about district politics here, nobody I represent rides the bus, or not many people do, even with the park and rides. It's not that convenient for us. And for transit to work, it needs to be convenient. And what we see here is tax dollars coming out of our working fund reserve to offset something. We're not seeing other funding from the province or, or enough funding from the school board to step up and offset these $200,000, essentially, that we are causing as lost revenue from the transit system. But I, I, I'm speaking now because I want to listen to what other councilors have to say on this, because compared to a road, it's a relatively low investment. Transit, a great city has a great transit system, but are we crippling that transit system by limiting the money that it can be earning for itself through its operations? And those are the questions that sort of plague me with this option, because I want our transit system to be sustainable and successful, and I'm not sure that this takes us in that direction to balance the financial sustainability. We have great programs for people getting new jobs. We have great programs for people with lower incomes. We have great programs to help people get into transit that costs us a lot less than this and achieve similar goals. So that's my concern, and, and in the balance that I sit on when I'm kind of thinking about this, I want to see a successful, vibrant city, and I'm not sure this achieves that.
Council Neil.
Thank you very much. I just want to point out to my fellow councilors, in my mind, this was probably the most popular initiative that council in the last term took. And we phased it in, grade nine, then grade 10, then grade 11, and now the proposal on the floor is to include grade 12. I'm not sure how many people on council have a transit pass or take the bus on a daily basis like I do. I will say, in almost a year, there has been one occasion when I had to stand on the bus, when there wasn't a seat for me on the bus. So this isn't a case of having to expand what I agree is an excellent service. The previous counselor, I appreciate that, that he represents countryside, and unfortunately, they don't have a transit system there. But those grade nine, 10, 11, 12 kids who come into the city may well have an opportunity because of this bus pass to participate in extracurricular activities. They'll be able to catch a bus, meet a parent downtown to, to get a ride home. As, I taught high school for, for 30 years, and the reality is, there were some great athletes, and there were some great artists and drama and music people who weren't kids who weren't able to participate because they didn't have a parent that was available to give them a ride home. You know, working people often have two working parents, and giving them a pass gives them an opportunity to be on a level playing field and to participate in sports and extracurricular activities. If we don't support this, we're taking that away from those, those students, and I don't think that that's fair, frankly. I have had three people complain to me about this, and all three of them, they complained because they had homeschooled kids, and the homeschooled kids weren't able to participate in the program in the past. This is so popu, I mean, and let's also clarify with the community, yes, the city supplies a transit service, and we supply the lion's share of the funding of that service, but both the school boards that participate in this do, it's in their budget, and they do give Kingston Transit money towards this. So it's not a case of us totally subsidizing that, that for the school boards. The school board pays for it. In fact, I understand from speaking to one of the trustees about this coming forward this weekend, it's already in their budget. And if we talk about working in partnership and collaboratively with the board, why would we make a unilateral decision today when they've already got within their budget recognition and an expectation that there, there'll be this program? That's no way to start a consultation relationship with a body, and that's a motion that this, I believe we passed unanimously one or two council meetings ago. So I, I think if we do not support this, like I say, it was the most popular of all of the decisions that a, and we aren't always popular in the community, but it was a popular, very popular decision made by the previous council. And this, to next this, thank you, to next this would be, I would suggest, the most unpopular decision that the current council will have made. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, will you take the chair?
I will, and I recognize you.
Thank you. Council Neil is right. This was certainly a very popular program that the last council introduced. I would argue that anytime you make something free, it's going to be popular. The question is, really, is this the best use of the money that we're talking about here? Because there is a cost to it, and we need to ask ourselves very clearly, is this the best way to introduce this kind of a support program? My concern is that we are subsidizing everybody, all grade 12 students, and there are a number of grade 12 students that can probably start to afford to pay something, to pay the youth fare. So is it the wisest choice for us to have a blanket subsidy where we're going to pay for everybody? Or is it a more targeted way where we can really channel that subsidy to the youth that really need it, so that we can do more? That's my concern. At the end of the day, we can give people free bus passes for a certain number of years, but eventually, they're going to hit that cold, hard reality that now they're going to have to pay. So we're just putting that reality off by a year. Is there a better way to do that? Is there a better way to transition? I just think that there's merit to this, but I don't think that the right way to do it is with this blanket proposal. I think that there's a way, that if we choose option B, it doesn't say that we never do anything with grade 12 students, it just says, in this way, at this time. So there might be an opportunity to kind of rework and say, okay, maybe there's a way to transition. So there might be an opportunity to kind of rework and say, okay, maybe there's a way to transition and to target funding to the students that really need it. That, I think, is a better way to go. So unfortunately, I think I'm going to have to vote against option A. Again, not because I don't support the premise, but I want to make sure that we're using dollars wisely, and they're going to the ones, to the students that need it. Thank you.
Thank you, I return the chair.
Okay, next on my list is Councillor Shell.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I thought I'd start from a reverse side. When I was on the Age Friendly Committee, one of the things that we discovered was that an awful lot of people have never taken the bus. And Peterborough was an example of a city that started to do a bus day for senior citizens so that they could literally come to places and be on the bus for the day because they didn't know how they worked. And in a time, certainly when I grew up, most people had cars. We didn't, so I knew the bus routes very well in the city of Kingston. But there were lots and lots of people who simply had never been on a bus. And I think it's very important that we have the youth used to being on a bus. Because our whole focus for our future is mass transit, getting people out of the cars, getting used to the whole idea of being on a mass transit or other ways of getting around in what is becoming a more condensed urban environment. And the best people to get used to a bus system, I think, are young people. They'll, they catch on so fast. I think this is an investment in our future, not just for the kids, but for our ways of getting around and reducing many of the costs of transit, transportation that we can see heading our way. So I'm very much in favor of this. Because to me, this is the future of our sensible transportation systems and getting people used to them at the right age. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is Councillor Hutchison.
Thank you, Your Worship, through you and the talking stick. First of all, I'd like to remind people that this is a pilot program. And I too am interested in the split between revenue from taxes and the revenue from fares. But this gets reexamined in option A at the, later on, in 2016, the planned transit fare review. So we have the opportunity to look at this again after we've tried it. I think, and a couple councillors have pointed this out, so I'll be brief about this. This is an opportunity for us to tire community together and to introduce some equity into the way in which people get around the city. Some students have difficulty paying, some may not. But I don't know how you're going to figure out who belongs in what situation unless you do an expensive administrative job of giving people red cards, orange cards, and blue cards. Or something that is, you know, that tells you the difference through some card or something. The thing is that, the important thing is, and Councillor Shell touched on this, is, and we said this when we started this program, is preparing students to be future riders. Is there a transition? Yes, there is. They become college and university students, and the cost to them is lower. It's through their student fees often. And, but because of their masses of usage, the city comes out ahead. And our cities, our buses are full, and we're actually moving them along. And then, we hope that they've more than will be future adult riders. Now, I think this brings us into some of our other issues as a council, as a community, which is environmental issues and climate change issues. Because we know students have to get to school, and eventually have to get to their job. So what's the better option? The better option is a good, clean, functioning transit system that doesn't put as many greenhouse gases in the air. We give, we sometimes forget that that's a very expensive option. We're already seeing that in infrastructure changes. If we lessen the car usage on our roads, our infrastructure needs would drop. The thing is, it has to be a significant increase in transit. So this is one way to get at that. The other thing is insurance costs. I don't know about you, but it's on my insurance that unpredictable weather events are causing my insurance to go up. I haven't had any unpredictable weather events inside my home, but it's on my insurance. And it's on probably yours too, whether your particular company tells you or not. And municipalities are making all kinds of infrastructure changes to combat the possibilities of climate change. A new seawall in Halifax. Different things that many municipalities are doing to combat the costs that go with not looking at climate change. So this is all part of a much bigger plan, a much bigger initiative. Are our citizens going to have to use transit? Hopefully, an even better system we have now? I think it's inevitable. That's what we're moving towards. We must move there. There must be bigger models share in terms of transit, bicycles, walking. It's not just words on a page. We've got to change. And so we're, this is one, albeit not a grain breaker, but a beginning, an education, a training for all of us. And so, let's train the kids. And hopefully, us old dogs will also change. So this is the best part I can do, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody that has not spoken. Okay, so we will call the vote.
Oh, point of order. As I moved this, I have the opportunity to speak last.
Let me just check that. Mr. Clerk?
Okay, thank you. Yes, so with a considered report, since you moved it, you do have the right to speak last. Just needed to double-check that. Just to note too, that included with option A are the first three clauses, which were common to both options, so just want to make sure everyone's clear. So we are voting on one, two, three, and option A as well. So Deputy Mayor Holland, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Worship. So a few points to just end on. The fact that we have undertaken this pilot, that there is a plan put forward here to evaluate it in a year's time, it would allow for a much clearer picture on the value of this entire program if we extended it to grade 12s before the evaluation. Secondly, well, I guess, in discussing, it didn't make a lot of sense to me or to many people that it hadn't been extended to grade 12, beyond the fact that it was an iterative process and that this was actually not a natural progression. So in order to find out why that was the case, I did a bit of digging around and found out that grade 12s actually use the transit system. So the underlying rationale of the program wasn't justified by having them access it. Because the underlying rationale was to educate students on using the transit system. So they were already using it, so therefore, staff had taken into consideration lost revenue based on the fact that they didn't need to learn as much. And that if we offered it to them for free, they would, we would be losing money. So I would argue that's an arbitrary calculation. And moreover, as I mentioned earlier, the reality changes dramatically when you get into grade 12. As students age, they have more responsibility, they have more expense often in their lives, and the expectations are a lot higher. They're expected to be more autonomous. So this, all those factors, take it into consideration, along with the demographics that we have, that we spoke about earlier this evening, the fact that we have in our strategic plan a desire to work with other organizations and be more sustainable. And the reality is, yellow buses will not be around forever. They will not be on the road, certainly not for high school students, probably, you know, within 10 years. So the school board is on side with this initiative. They are encouraged by the fact that we are looking at providing another option so that they can move away from that service. Again, more savings to be found. So the numbers, in terms of the cost, I would argue, are not totally accurate. Do not take into consideration the fact that the board, the school boards have already indicated a willingness to continue to support this program and to increase their contribution. We haven't even had those conversations yet. So I would urge everybody to please support this for one year, so we have a better picture. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, we will call the vote on option A. Still one person to vote. And that carries by a vote of nine to three. Number two, and the report number 62, is feasibility of a pedestrian scramble crossing at the intersection of Union Street and University Avenue. Again, there are two options presented. Councillor Neil.
Yes, thank you very much. I would move option B. Council approve the installation of pedestrian scramble crossing at an intersection of Union Street and University Avenue that includes audible signals, right, a right turn on red band, and thermoplastic brick pavers, crosswalk markings, at an approximate total cost of $130,000. If I have a second.
So Councillor Neil has moved option B. Is there a second? Seconded by Councillor Turner.
Thank you very much.
Would anyone like to speak to it? Councillor Neil.
I would indeed. Just a reminder that this came about, I believe, it was pointed out to me by Councillor Stroud. This was, what I'm about to read was the very first motion that this new council passed. Pardon me? Second, okay, I, I sick corrected. On December 16th, myself and Councillor Stroud, whereas the corner of Union and University is a very high pedestrian traffic area during the university school year, and whereas scramble crossings have been identified as a highly effective way to mitigate traffic at high pedestrian intersections, and this has been identified in the Queen's Campus Master Plan as a potential remedy by the Queen's consultants, therefore, be it resolved that city staff explore the feasibility of a scramble crossing at Union and University with a report and recommendation to council no later than June for possible implementation by September 1st, 2015. That, if people, as people will probably recall, we received support from the Queen's student body through AMS for exactly that. We also received a letter from Principal Wolf commending council for considering this because indeed, it was part of their master plan report. And so, it was probably something that was going to be coming forward in any event. And I do believe, if I'm not mistaken, that that, that motion, as I just read it, passed unanimously here. So here we are, it's June, and our original report, first of all, I hope everybody's had an opportunity to read carefully the consultant's report on the feasibility. Because that report says clearly, it's a very feasible option to consider. And they point out other, much busier communities that have scramble crossings. I have to admit, probably the only place in Kingston today where a scramble crossing would make any sense is at the corner of Union and University. If you ever go there, when classes are changing at lunch hour, it is already, at some times, operating almost like a scramble crossing. I mean, there's talk, the one negative thing that was in this report suggests that there would be a traffic delay for some buses. I believe number 12 might have been the one that was identified as being at risk. I invite any of you to go there on a busy lunch hour, when classes are in session, and buses are being held up without a scramble crossing for a heck of a lot longer than waiting for people who start crossing on the yellow, the flow continues. The reality is that, without a scramble crossing, I think the traffic problems for pedestrians there would even be more, more of a problem without the scramble crossing. The other thing is, we both, in our strat plans, strategic planning sessions, in our, we always, always say, here's the cascade. Pedestrians first, cyclists, transit, automobiles. That is supposed to be in every strategic document that we have, including our transportation master plan, including other plans.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you. That is supposed to be the priority cascade. But every, this would be a case, I believe, where automobiles, vehicles are again trumping pedestrians. And if we're going to be true to our word, we can't continue to put millions and millions of dollars into roads and not even consider a way to alleviate the only pedestrian crisis spot in the city. Thank you.
Next on my list is Councillor Turner.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through the talking stick. I agree with Councillor Neil on all of his points, actually. And I think it's very important that we approve this and put in this pedestrian scramble crossing. I think it's a safety concern, and I, I know I try to avoid that, that corner at all times because it's very busy. So I would definitely vote on this as a safety concern. And if the buses have to wait, I know that's, that's a tough thing. But I think pedestrians do come first. And I do think that we have to take care of the kids that go to that school. So thank you.
Councillor Stroud.
My turn to stand up for one. Thank you, Your Worship, through you and the talking stick. I'd like to thank the two previous speakers for supporting what I believe would be a great improvement in my district and to constitute, see that not only the ones that live in my district, but live throughout the downtown. Just, it's been said, but let me just say it again in a different way. Pedestrians, you've heard about the 99% and the 1%, the Occupy movement. Pedestrians are the 100%. Because everyone in the city, at some point, is a pedestrian, no matter what age they are, unless they haven't learned to walk yet, of course. But even my two-year-old is a pedestrian, and it goes all the way up to the age, to the seniors. Everybody is a pedestrian at some point. It's the only mode of transportation that applies to everybody. And you see it at that intersection more than anywhere else. So just, that's my first thing. But I actually want to focus more on one of the details in both option A and option B. And that is the most expensive of, in both options, because it's in common with both. And that is the thermoplastic pavers. They're eight, they're costing at $80,000. And they're recommended in both option A and option B. And I'd like staff to sell that item to us because it is actually the most expensive thing in this report. So, because I have an amendment ready that would take that out, and it could always be added later. But I need to know why it's important that they are in, because they were in both of the options. And maybe if staff could ask that, answer that question first, and then I'll decide whether I want to put in the amendment.
Ms. Green.
Through you, Your Worship. It is a high cost for the thermoplastic pavement markings. But as we've seen on Lower Ontario Street, where we have rebuilt those intersections, they are very visible, they're very unique, and they also provide a traffic calming effect to the motorists. And they're extremely durable. So we expect those thermoplastic crosswalks that we have on Princess to last for the life of that pavement. So they could last as long as 20 years. So if we don't use this type of crosswalk at Union and University, we would have to use a plastic-type paint, which would last up to five years, but most likely would start to show somewhere after two to three. So we would constantly need to re-- to replace those markings, and they wouldn't provide us with the traffic calming effect that the brick paver type look would give us.
Thank you. Button up again. Um, yeah, so, so, thank you for pointing out the traffic calming effect. Uh, that, I guess I, that is a very important detail. Uh, the tactile raised paver is, acts as a traffic calmer and protects the pedestrian in that sense. Um, before I go on, I'm just going to mention a couple other points that I had, uh, quickly. So, uh, today we have representatives over here from Queen's administration, Mr. Andrew Naples, and also, uh, Mr. Matt Cusson, the AMS Municipal Affairs Commissioner. Uh, they're here mostly because of this, I, I hope. Uh, because I actually have a letter, or we, we received a letter from the Queen's principal in December, uh, where he, uh, specifically, uh, endorses this idea. I'm writing in support of the motion put forward by Counselors Neal and Stroud, dot, dot, dot. Uh, Queen's University endorses this proposal, and we are pleased to see enhancements, enhancements to pedestrian safety come forward to council. And, um, also, some helpful suggestions from, from the Municipal Affairs Commissioner, who has been lobbying for this improvement for some time. Uh, the, the issue of safety, uh, Counselor Turner brought this up, and I completely agree. Uh, the safest option between option A and option B is the scramble, because it's a four-way red for cars, uh, with an all-way green for pedestrians, very clear, uh, different phases for pedestrians and cars. And, uh, there is a real problem at this intersection with turning vehicles and pedestrians. There actually have been some collisions, some car on, on pedestrian collisions. The safest option is the scramble, and I think that it's an only, only an extra $20,000 for the scramble phase, uh, so that element, for talking about the value for money that Counselor Cannon mentioned earlier, I think that's really obvious, that it's important. So I support, uh, option B, and, uh, and the only question is whether or not we want to save $80,000 on the pavers. Um, I guess I'm going to not move the amendment at this time, and I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Allen.
Thank you, your worship, through you and the talking stick. Um, I, I think the, the lifecycle cost of the pavers makes sense. Uh, my, my slight concern with this, and I think I'm still going to support it, is, um, is, is that we're building a premium sidewalk, uh, sorry, not crosswalk here, uh, that, that doesn't exist anywhere else. And even just down the road, there are, uh, Division and, uh, Union, it's just as bad. And it's actually worse because it's not, there's no crosswalk there. Uh, there's no signals for anybody there. And, uh, so i- it's sort of interesting that we're going to have this really amazing, high-tech crosswalk, and then just half a block or a block away, we're going to have no infrastructure protecting pres, our pedestrians at all. And I, I think we need to approach these kinds of issues with a more systemic approach to make sure that we're ensuring safety throughout the system and where we can. Um, and, uh, I'm, uh, I'm actually very pleased with the amount of work that, uh, the Traffic Division has been doing, uh, this council, in terms of making safety improvements throughout our city, including my district. Um, but, uh, I just wanted to, uh, to point out that we need to keep an eye on that. I do have a question for staff about this, um, and that is, uh, if, uh, I have two questions, actually, and I'll, I'll ask them both. Um, during quieter times, so right now, at lunch, it's not so bad, uh, going through there. And for the next two months, it's not so bad going through there. Uh, December goes town. Um, even after nine o'clock at night, it's not so bad there. Uh, are we able to adjust the phasing of the, uh, signals to, uh, only put these on during a high, high-demand periods of the day? Or do they have to run, um, in the same sequence at all times of the day? And then my second question is, should we decide we need to remove it, uh, as they did at Bay and Young, sorry, Bay and Blor in Toronto, uh, what do you imagine, estimate that cost to be?
Ms. Green.
Through you, your worship. Yes, once the scramble crossing is installed, it has to operate 24/7. We cannot turn it off during quieter hours, evenings, weekends, and that's due to the fact that we don't ever want to surprise a motorist or a pedestrian. We need to be consistent, so that once we train motorists, that there is a pedestrian-only phase. We want to make certain, certain that they know it is operating all of the time. And the second part to your question, uh, the cost to remove, uh, the scramble crossing would most likely be quite minimal. Uh, we would already have the audible pedestrian signal in place, so we would not remove that or any of the, uh, thermoplastic markings. It would just be a matter of having Utilities Kingston go in and remove, um, very, uh, short pavement markings, crosswalk markings, as well as some pedestrian heads, and we'd have to remove the right turn-on-red band, because that is a bylaw that will need to be passed by council.
Thank you. Um, that's, uh, that's nice to know that if we, if we find that we don't, this doesn't work out for us, and it, it's not working year-round for us, that we, uh, can go back on our options and still have an improved intersection, uh, at a lower cost. So, I, I'm going to support this motion.
Okay, so we will call the vote on option B. And that carries. Report number 63 from Planning Committee.
Your worship, through you and the talking stick, it's my pleasure to, uh, submit report number 63 from the Planning Committee and ask that it be received.
So it's moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Shaw. Report number 63 from the Planning Committee to be received and adopted.
So there's just the one clause. So we will call the vote. This is for zoning bylaw amendment 53 and 55 West Street. And that carries. Report number 64 from the Municipal Heritage Committee.
Thank you, your worship, through you and the talking stick. Uh, this is report number 64, uh, and I would ask that, uh, from the Municipal Heritage Committee, and I would ask that it be received and adopted. Thank you.
It's moved by Counselor Stroud, seconded by Counselor Shaw. The report number 64 from the Municipal Heritage Committee to be received and adopted.
So there are, uh, five different clauses. Would anyone like them separated? Seeing none, we will vote on them as a whole. Please vote. And that carries. Report number 65 from the Arts, Recreation and Community Policies Committee.
Thank you, your worship. Um, it's my pleasure to be, to present report number 65 in the Arts, Recreation and Community Policies Committee, moved by ourselves and seconded by Counselor O'Sanick for consideration by council.
So it's moved by Counselor Hutcheson, seconded by Counselor O'Sanick. Report number 65 from the Arts, Recreation and Community Policies Committee to be received and adopted.
So there are three clauses. Would anyone like any of them separated? So seeing none, we will vote on them as a whole. Uh, item A is the plan for the administration of the 2015-2016 City of Kingston Heritage Fund. Item B is appointment of the Civic Collections Working Group, and item C is appointment of Historical Interpretation Working Group. We will call the vote. And that carries. We have nothing from committee of the whole. We have three information reports. Number one, Responsible Pet Ownership Program Status Report. Counselor O'Sanick?
Thank you, your worship, through you and the talking stick. Um, I think it's great news that 61 spay neutered vouchers were redeemed last year in 2014, with over 80% of those being redeemed when we increased the voucher limit to $250. So that seemed to have been a good move, uh, last fall. Um, 253 cats were, um, fixed that were feral cats, and, uh, so that's a big success as well. And the number of rabbits that, um, showed up to be abandoned, you know, with animal rescue groups, um, dropped dramatically since we implemented the ban on the sale of rabbits at pet stores. So those are really good successes. Um, Snucky, the Spay Neuter Kingston Initiative, they gave a summary tonight in the addends, and if you didn't have a chance to read it, um, before our council meeting started, they want to focus on feral cat colonies right now in Kingston's North End. So if anybody hears of any feral cat colonies, um, in the North End, um, definitely to contact Snucky. Thank you.
Thank you. So, just a note, it's just questions, um, questions only on information reports. Um, Counselor Allen? Nope. Okay, number two, tender and contract awards subject to the established criteria for delegation of authority for the month of April 2015? Any questions? Number three, intent to demolish listed property under section 27.3 of the Ontario Heritage Act 101 to 109 Princess Street. Okay, there are no information reports from members of council, miscellaneous business. Uh, number one, that council receive the resignation of Robyn Kisby from Municipal Accessibility Advisory Committee effective July 3rd, 2015, with regret. Can I have a mover, please? Moved by Counselor Shaw, seconded by Counselor And that carries. For number two, I'm looking for two volunteers to participate on the City of Kingston Heritage Fund Review Committee in September 2015. Counselor Shaw, Counselor O'Sanick, anybody else? Counselor Neal. So we're going to have a vote.
No, and, and I'll, I'll go down to the second one.
No, I'm sorry. I thought, I thought we were doing both at the same time, but if we're just doing the one...
Oh, sorry. You're right. I'm just turning the page here. So...
Yeah, there's project and there's operating grants.
So the first two are the project grants, and the second are the operating grants? So just to clarify, so, can I have two volunteers for the project grants review committee? First, Counselor O'Sanick, Counselor Shaw, thank you. And then I need two volunteers for the, uh, operating grants review. Counselor Neal and... Counselor Cannon.
All right.
Thank you.
We're a team.
So thank you to our volunteers. Can I have a mover and seconder? Moved by Counselor George, seconded by Counselor Turner? And that carries. New motions. Number one, moved by Counselor O'Sanick, seconded by Counselor Allen, that the council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston hereby endorse the following resolution from the municipality of Trent Lakes, passed on May 5th, 2015, regarding a request to amend the Aggregates Resources Act. Whereas a primary concern for the municipality of Trent Lakes is that due to our close proximity to the Greater Toronto Area, there will be an increase in the demand for aggregates from this area resulting in an increase in the number and size of quarries in the municipality. And whereas it is widely acknowledged that extracting aggregates from the landscape is an intrusive activity that has the potential to cause long-term impacts on publicly important environmental resources and farmland, increases in traffic, road damage, and greenhouse gas emissions, and degrades the quality of life in local communities. And whereas in 2015, the provincial policy statement was amended to allow aggregate producers to propose extraction sites without having to demonstrate the need for the additional supply of aggregate resources, thereby creating a barrier to comprehensive planning and favoring the protection of aggregate extraction at the expense of other provincial interests, and as a result, encouraging the rapid and non-sustainable use of the resource. And whereas applications for licenses under the current Aggregates Resources Act do not require proponents to demonstrate the need to extract aggregate resources in a particular area, therefore be it resolved that the municipality of Trent Lakes requests that the Ontario government amend the provincial policy statement and the Aggregates Resources Act to require aggregate extraction proponents to demonstrate need for the particular supply of resource proposed for extraction. And further, that this resolution be forwarded to the Honorable Teck McMeekin, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the Honorable Bill Morrow, Minister of Natural Resources and Forestry, the Honorable Glenn Murray, Minister of the Environment and Climate Change, the Honorable Jeff Leo, Minister of Agriculture, Food and Rural Affairs, provincial opposition party leaders, the Environment Commissioner of Ontario, Barry Devlin, MP, Laurie Scott, MPP, FCM, and AMO. And further, that the circulation of this resolution to all municipalities in Ontario be requested that they adopt a similar resolution in support of the requested changes to the provincial policy statement and the Aggregates Resources Act, that the municipality of Trent Lakes be so advised. Counselor O'Sanick?
Thank you, your worship, just very briefly through you and the talking stick. Um, at our last meeting on June 2nd, council saw this resolution come through from Trent Lake. Um, the town of Halton Hills, they have also endorsed, um, the same resolution. Our planning committee has seen applications, um, put forward for unlimited tonnage for, um, quarry expansions north of the 401. Our residents seem very concerned about any effects on the water table, you know, affecting their drinking water supply. Um, even the quarry right at Collins, no, where is it? Um, Coronation Boulevard and Taylor Kidd Boulevard. Um, I've been questioned, you know, that the quarry's going non-stop during the night, a lot of trucks in there, and who is watching, how much is being extracted from the quarry? So, um, this resolution we saw, and I thought it was a good thing to endorse. They're trying to get all the municipalities in Ontario to endorse it. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Allen.
Uh, thank you, your worship, and, uh, through you and the talking stick, just a thank you for, to, uh, Counselor O'Sanick for pointing this out. Um, this has been, um, uh, the Aggregates Resources Act has been something that I've been learning about quite quickly, uh, in my short time as a councillor, uh, in, in terms of, uh, dealing with, uh, a quarry and, uh, some of the restrictions or lack of restrictions associated with it in my district. And I, um, I find that we're, we are sometimes unable to respond, uh, in, in a way that, uh, best befits the community, and, uh, we need to find a balance. As, uh, the mayor, uh, mentioned earlier, the world is changing, and we're changing the way things are done, uh, in, in all sorts of ways. And so we need to have evidence of a need for, um, a resource in order to, for a community to understand the balance it must provide in, in order to work this. Don't get me wrong, I'm 100% here for, uh, economic development, uh, for intensification. Aggregates are needed for those kinds of projects and building, but we need to do it in a sustainable, proactive, and, uh, responsible way. And, uh, we need to ensure that, uh, those people who are working with us and, and, and working with the Government of Ontario to get their, uh, licenses approved are proving that they're going to do this in a sustainable, uh, responsible, uh, way. And, uh, so, um, I thank you all for your consideration and support on this motion.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments, we will call the vote. And that carries. Number two, moved by Counselor Neal, seconded by Deputy Mayor Holland. Whereas Canada Post has scheduled the elimination of door-to-door postal delivery with little or no community consultation, and at great potential servicing costs to municipalities across Canada, showing little concern for the municipal planning process and locating community post boxes. And whereas the City of Hamilton has challenged Canada Post regarding the lack of community consultation in the locating and servicing of community postal boxes, resulting in an indefinite postponement of the cancelling of door-to-door delivery in Hamilton. And whereas this policy would make postal service extremely difficult for seniors and anyone physically challenged, and would make Canada the only country in the G8 without daily mail delivery, and whereas all federal opposition parties have committed to a full review or revocation of this policy, therefore be it resolved that Kingston add its voice to the almost 600 municipalities across Canada that have passed motions in opposition to the cancellation of door-to-door mail delivery, and let a copy of this motion be shared with the Prime Minister of Canada, all federal opposition party leaders, AMO, FCM, Kingston and the Islands MP, Kingston and the Islands MPP, and all Ontario municipalities with populations over 40,000. Counselor Neal, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Um, we, I thought we- We, I thought we had excellent delegation that, that spoke about the merits of this. The numbers, I wrote this motion up last week, it's now over 600 municipalities across Canada have passed motions. We received one today from Newmarket. That was very well written, better written than mine, that pointed out many, many issues if you didn't have a chance to read it. I think this is really critical, both from a community perspective and as a municipality, us doing our due diligence, because there are so many risks involved and so many costs. It's been estimated, I believe, at $2.5 million is what it may cost Hamilton with all of the additional services that they'll have to provide. And the federal government is literally ramming this down the throats of every community in Canada. Like the motion says, we'll be the only G8 country that doesn't have door-to-door delivery in, particularly in their urban areas. And so, so it, it would be truly unfortunate. And we, we do live in a community, and in a country with an aging population. I, I feel that every day. But the reality is that for some people, for some people elderly who live alone, or handicap people who live alone, the postal worker is the only person that they have an opportunity to interact with. And for people like Pamela who spoke to us earlier tonight, the reality is that those, those postal workers, the vast, vast majority of them really do care about the community. They care about, they get to know the residents at the doors. They, for some people living alone, they may be the only conversation contact point potentially that they have. And I know that was the case with my mother when she was living alone in her house. She looked forward to the postal worker coming to her door. He never had to put it through the slot because she was always there to say hi to him, and to thank him, and to take it. And that, that's the kind of service that I think we do a terrible disservice to the community if we support the federal government in this decision that, that they've made, despite the fact that they've made over $200 million last year in profits. They're still pushing ahead with this. So I sincerely hope, and I always jinx motions when I say I hope this passes unanimously, but I do indeed hope this passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? We will call the vote. And that carries unanimously. Motion number three, moved by deputy mayor Holland, seconded by councillor Neil. Whereas community groups and residents throughout the city are interested in accessible space for meetings and cultural activities, and whereas council has approved the culture plan which recommends the establishment of community hubs to foster cohesive, culturally vibrant spaces for residents of Kingston, and whereas approximately $50 million will be spent on the current site of QECVI for the newly amalgamated public and secondary schools in the next four years, thereby creating a unique opportunity for the Limestone District School Board and the city of Kingston to work together to create and manage shared space for the purpose of serving students and residents through the potential for library resources and community meeting space. And whereas such a partnership has proven successful between Hayden Secondary School and the municipality of Burlington through a shared learning commons, offering innovative programs such as one that provides high school students with volunteer hours for partnering with senior citizens to teach computer applications. And whereas planning for public and secondary school designs is underway, and any collaborative project for a community hub or learning commons should also be in the planning stages, therefore be it resolved that city staff be authorized to work with library board and Limestone District School Board to create space to facilitate community use, including library resources, and report back to the Limestone District School Board, Kingston Frontenac Public Library Board, and city council with preliminary findings for possible partnerships no later than Q3. Deputy mayor, you have the floor.
Thank you, your worship, and through you and the talking stick. I just wanted to point out a couple of things about this motion. It really is about process. There's no cost involved at this point for the city. This is an opportunity that we have. And the fact is, there is considerable public money being spent in this area. There's currently a branch of the library that is underserving the community. It's not open, it's not open every day and for very many hours. So one of the ideas that's been floating around is that that branch of the library would close in order to allow the library board to put its funds into much-needed branch in the Rita Heights area. This is an opportunity to ensure that some library service exists currently on a site where we now know there will be about 1,300 secondary students arriving. That, that is a change in, in this scenario. And so, timing is important here. This is why I'm not allowing for due process for everybody to get their committee members on our new amalgamated working group with the school boards, because the design committee is currently meeting for the new secondary school, and if the board is interested at all in, in this option, we need to consider the footprint of the area. And so it's important that these discussions begin to take place now, and, and that's essentially what, what the focus is on here. And I just have to clarify one thing, because there has been some discussion, there is a public school that's scheduled on this site as well as a secondary school. There is no option for the library in the, in the public school at this point because they're set to break ground there. So this would be an opportunity to work with the high school, which is why the focus is on high school with the example of Burlington. So again, it has to do with timing, ensuring that architects have the opportunity to, to evaluate the entire site by allowing the board, the city, and the library board to get together and, and discuss the possibilities here. And just one last point, I think also the fact that there are impacts on the community and the fact that we're looking for all kinds of cost savings, and we're trying to find ways to provide resource centers and, and space, that is not necessarily, the cost is not necessarily borne entirely by the city. This is an opportunity for that. And it also involves, there's so much interest, it's necessary to have a consultation with the community. So what is laid out here is a way to begin the process and ensure that the process is open. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is councillor Neil, but before we do that, it is 10:43, so I will ask for a motion to extend the meeting. Moved by councillor Allen to finish the agenda, seconded by councillor Camden.
And I got the message, so. I'll be brief.
Okay, so first we'll vote on the motion to extend the meeting to complete the agenda. Please vote now. And that carries. Councillor Neil?
Thank you very much. I've, besides being a teacher librarian in my dark and distant past, I also have been on the library board for 20 of the last 24 years, so, and I, every chance I've gotten have pointed out to people when they talk about cultural community hubs, that we've always had cultural community hubs, they're called libraries. And I think this is a, a good opportunity for us to truly work collaboratively, as we often speak about doing, but working collaboratively with both the school board and the, and the library board, because the library is totally autonomous, governed by the library act. So they definitely have to have a place at the table in, in this discussion. For people who may be new to council, in our last term, there was some discussion came forward about the potential for a library at Rita Heights School. And part of the, and, and part of that was that when the library some years ago did a strategic study of right across the county, of all of the county, and the city, the least served, the lowest served area was in the northeast of the city, was in the heights. And that's still, I'm hoping, an opportunity, a thing that we can address. But at that time, one of the things that was suggested was if we put a, if we put a library in that community for the North End, we probably would need to close the library at Kingscourt. And that was, the commissioner can correct me, but she's nodding, so I think she's agreeing. That was part of the consideration at the time. I think this can be a win-win situation if we can work with the, with the board and with the library whereby we have an opportunity to maintain library service in Kingscourt, which we potentially would lose, and hopefully in the near future be able to, to offer the same service in, in the Rita Heights area. So I, not going to jinx it by twice asking for unanimous, but I think it would be a strong message to our partners if we could. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Shell?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Just one question, because the library board is its own autonomous company. They know about this and they're happy?
Councillor Neil?
Thank you. They do indeed. I, with the permission of the mover before, or actually the same time it came into the clerks, I shared it with the, with, with the chief librarian, and the chief librarian has shared it with, with the chair of the library board. It hasn't gone through because they didn't have a meeting, the library board process, but both the chair and the chief librarian know it word for word.
Okay, so we will call the vote. Still two people to vote. And that carries. Are there any notices of motion? Seeing none, minutes.
Moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor Camden, that the minutes of the city council meeting number 2015-16, held Tuesday, June 2, be confirmed.
And that carries. We have a number of communication items. Is there any other business? Seeing none, Mr. Clerk asked for bylaws.
It's moved by councillor Turner, seconded by councillor George, that bylaws one through four be given their first and second reading.
Still one person to vote. And that carries.
It's moved by councillor Holland, seconded by councillor Ossanik, that bylaws two and four be given their third reading.
And that carries. Motion to adjourn, please. Moved by councillor George, seconded by councillor Neil. We adjourn. Thank you very much.